Listland, here. Stewart, here. Stautchen, here. Sturkowski, here.
Here.
Sturzeng, here.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Can anybody hear anything?
He's absent as of right now.
Mr. Zoff, here. Ms. Gaston?
Delayed, should be here in about 10 minutes.
Mr. White?
Present.
All right. Any motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals, to review collective negotiations with the Beacon Teachers Association, and to review collective negotiations with the Civil Service Employees Association Nurses Unit.
Apologize, we were supposed to do a workshop, but we had so much of negotiations and stuff that we're probably going to do a special board meeting on March 20th at 6:30 to 7:30 to discuss board goals, and then after that, we'll have the diversity committee. So I know at the last board meeting, I said that we were going to try and do a workshop from 7:30 to 8:30, have our executive session, so forth. So I know it was stated in the agenda, but I just thought I could publicly say it as well, that we're going to call a special board meeting on March 20th to discuss the board goals, which will be part of the workshop. If we could all please rise for moment's silence for Mrs. Ruth Peralta, who retired as a high school guidance counselor from Beacon City School District. Thank you. And in themes of workshops on the budget, we have the PPS Director, John Condelo, presenting on the state of PPS for the budget for seventh and eighth school year.
Good evening. Tonight's presentation, I am Don Condelo, the Director of PPS.
Melissa Thomas, I'm the supervisor for Special Ed.
And Kate Hines, CSC and CPSC Chairperson in the district.
So tonight, we're going to cover topics so that you learn about our students and their special needs. We're going to review our PPS goals, what the Pupa Personnel Service Department encompasses, our projections for the 17, 18 school year, and programs and positions for the 18, 19 school year. So in the PPS office right now, there is a full-time Director of Special Education Services, a full-time Supervisor of Special Education, a full-time CSC/CPSC Chairperson, and a five-and-a-half Administrative Secretary/Senior Typist. And then Pupa Personnel Staff, which are school-based positions around the six buildings here in the district. We have six school psychologists, we have one subschool psychologist, we have six social workers, we have six speech pathologists, we have three occupational therapists, we contract out for our physical therapist, we have special education teachers in our K-12 continuum, we have teaching assistants, and we also have one-to-one aides.
Sure. So our goals, you know, for students in Beacon City School District, is to meet the specialized needs so that they may access the curriculum and experience success, to provide our students with free and appropriate education within the least restrictive environment, special education students will achieve mastery of their IEP goals as measured through progress monitoring, and to provide our students with services and supports to master grade level curriculum.
So the supervision and support that we do in our department is multifaceted. We provide support for the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the students, and the families, and under that, we collaborate with the response to intervention and referrals to CSC, 504 accommodation plans, the coordination of Medicaid and CSC place students on home instruction, coordination of special education services, Medicaid providers and reporting of those services, ADA compliance and accommodations for staff, coordination of the McKinney-Vento and identification of support, APPR evaluations this year on all PPS-related staff, and professional development with specialized instruction.
What falls under the PPS services? Special education services, counseling services, speech and language, OT, physical therapy services, Section 504 services, preschool special education, McKinney-Vento services, district of location for out-of-district placements, and special education grants, titles 611 and 619.
So our additional functions, in addition to what we just covered, we also hold monthly special education meetings with our elementary, middle school, and high school staff. We hold monthly PPS team meetings in our department. We've done a creation of the Annual Review Guidance Document, which every staff member has, so it talks about processes and procedures as it relates to annual reviews forms, so that was reviewed and gone out to all the staff. We've created a Google Doc calendar that talks about all the meetings that we have to do in the spring, so everybody's on the same page. IEP writing document and tools, all the teachers have a synopsis of what are good best practices in IEP development, and we started those conversations a few months ago. We are starting this year of encouraging our 5th grade to 12th grade students to attend their annual review meetings. We've been conducting program reviews based upon students' individual needs throughout the school year, and also when a student's been placed in a program, we meet on that again to determine if the program is appropriate.
So the Beacon's continuum of services, and these are the services we currently offer in district, related services, speech, counseling, OT, PT, vision, hearing, consultant teacher, indirect, indirect, specialized instruction within the GenEd classroom focused on individual with special needs, resource room, small group, no more than five students, integrated co-teaching, specialized instruction delivery within the GenEd classroom to the entire class via special ed teacher co-teaching with a GenEd teacher, this is a 12 to 1 ratio. We also do a special class, 1211, to provide primary instruction that is specially designed to meet the similar needs of a group of students in self-contained setting, separate from their non-disabled pairs. We also have an 811, and at the high school, we have a step program, and it's to provide primary instruction that is specifically designed to meet the similar needs of a group of students in a self-contained setting, separate from their non-disabled pairs. We also have a special class, which is a 151, to provide specialized instruction to support the four subjects for 6th, 7th, and two core for 8th grade.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but you guys are so familiar with this that it's like you could say it in your sleep, but can you just, when you say 811, is that a?
So 811, you have eight students, one teacher, and one teaching assistant.
Teaching assistant.
Continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
But in general, if you like, if you come across something that the layperson might not know as a acronym or?
Just stop us, because for us, we may not, we'll just go with it. So just stop us, that's okay.
The special class, which is a 151, 15 students and one special ed teacher, is to provide specialized instruction to support the four core subjects. And then the ADL, it's a daily live-in class, and that's for students who are measured using the New York State Alternative Assessment. And that's, currently, that's a 12-1, so you have 12 students, one teacher, three support staff, and then another support staff. Intensive specialized instruction in two or more core content areas for student success using the New York State Alternative Assessment.
You want to touch on the MAPS?
Sure.
Yes, we also listed there is the MAPS class, which is that very small ratio of six students, one teacher, and two teaching assistants, and we have that at the elementary school setting in the district, and that's to provide intensive instructive instruction for students. Some of the students in that class are on the spectrum, so they're receiving intensive speech and language support, as well as, you know, skills for being successful in the classroom.
And then we have the study skills seminar. It's 15 students, one special ed teacher, and this is offered at the middle school and the high school, and the focus of the seminar is to focus on executive skills. So the skills of taking a test, of being organized, skills that they will need to develop in order to be successful in the middle school and the high school.
Is that study skills seminar open for anybody? Because that's?
It's a 151, so it's a specialized program.
And we'll talk about that a little bit further, because we are looking at redefining that for the following school year, but that will come a little bit later.
Same question on the special class 15 to 1, on the four core subjects, is that special ed only, or is that open for?
Yes, these are all special ed continuum of services.
So we wanted to provide a little synopsis of the special education data from last school year, the 15-16, and the current school year, 16-17, understanding that we are in the throes of annual reviews. So this is data of February of this school year. We understand that our projections and numbers may fluctuate a little bit, but when you're looking at the two years of the data, our CPSE's number of students classified have remained the same. We received 24 new referrals this year. In our elementary, we have 209 students that are classified, five of them were found ineligible. We have, we're projecting, and our annual reviews on our pre-projection sheet as possibly three students being declassified. We'll probably, we'll have, right now, 12 students exiting. We had 11 new students coming into the district with IEPs, and we had 34 referrals coming out of the elementary buildings this year.
So when you say exited, does that mean they've left the district, or?
Or graduated.
Or graduated.
But pretty much for the elementary, they left the district.
So out of all these numbers, then, so how many are actually considered special education? So count the number classified, like it's 603 up top, and 619 on the bottom, but then you add in the ineligible, declassified, exited, et cetera?
So if you're declassified, you still get declassification support services beyond that year, your testing accommodations, and modifications for the classroom.
So do we know how many students are in special education?
The classified numbers. Yes, so at the CPSE level, we have 94 at the elementary level, I'm sorry, at the bottom, we have, currently, we have 209 students. At the middle school, we have 125 students. At the high school, we currently have 191 students that are classified.
Okay, so total is 619, well, if you add those up, it's 619 students, when it was?
And these are in-district students, right? We still have about 79 students out of district that are classified.
Out of district means that they go to out-of-district services?
We'll get to that next slide. We'll show you that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you were pointing out the difference between last year and this year?
Right, so it's an increase from last year to this year. I'm trying to see, you know, get a feel of how many students overall get special education services, and is it increasing or decreasing?
Increasing.
Increasing.
Yeah.
And ultimately, what percentage of our student population is in the special ed program, and how does that compare with the other districts in the area and the state?
We'll find that information out for you, and we'll send it to you.
The 94 now are CPSC, are those the children that we send to out-of-district services?
CPS, go ahead.
CPSC, good question. Stands for Committee on Preschool Special Education. So those are the children under five, three and four-year-olds, that are provided services through the county, but as a district, we oversee that. I chair the meetings to help determine what level of service, what services the children need.
So the numbers, the elementary, MS, Beacon, those are their grade levels, but those don't necessarily are the children that we see the services in the district, there's some, their numbers also include children of those grade levels that go out of district that we see services?
This is all in district.
All in district services.
Right.
So there are 13 classifying conditions under, that we can examine when we're at IEP meetings. We designated the 12 that we have students identified in, and so we provided data from the past two years, from the 15-16 school year to this current school year. So you can see that our students who have been identified with learning disabilities has increased from the 15-16 to the 16-17 school year. Our students who have been identified in speech and language have increased, our students who have been identified in other health impaired have also increased, and everybody else has pretty much stayed the same. So those are the three areas that we've seen increase of their numbers of identified students in those categories. So here's our out-of-district placements, and hopefully, we can provide some clarification. We provide services for students who require additional supports that are beyond what we could provide here in the district, and these are the various programs that we will do, send packets out to, and look at to see if they have programming needs to match the students that do require that additional support. So our three-year analysis, to take a look at our out-of-district placements. So through the various BOSI's programs, it seems to be at least 10 students a year increase into those programs. Our approved private day school programs, we've seen a slight increase in students going into those programs. Our residential programs, a slight increase. Right now, we have five students pending placement that we're looking for placements for, and the total number of types of out-of-district, it's 84 currently that are in our out-of-district placement. We are also projecting for the next school year, giving the past data points, and so that we could provide some analysis when we do our overall budget for next year for out-of-district placement.
So that's the 95 for the, 95 for 2017-2018 was the out-of-district, that's what you were saying, you add to the 619 that was on the other slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're kind of projecting, we're looking at the past data to see when we're doing our budget for the 17-18 school year, anticipating what our numbers may be like, so when we set those budgets, we can kind of have a rough number.
Right. So I want to address that question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not necessarily adding all 95 students, because some of the current students of our 216 may require these programs, so there may be movement from in-district program to out-of-district programs, where we're not increasing our overall number, just the number of students who might be added to that out-of-district.
A few slides back, when we said the total for 2016-17 was 619 students, and then if I add in, I guess 84?
Yes.
619, so was the question set up?
Right.
So for the out-of-district expenditures, this will be a time where Ann Marie will jump in if I stumble a little bit. So in 15-16, for our residential approved private school, there was an expenditure of $1.7 million. Through state aid, we got $1.4 million back. For our BOSI's, it's around $2.25 million that we spent, but we got $1.3 million back from our BOSI's aid. So in the 15-16 school year, we expended $3.9 million, but we got back from state aid at $2.66 million. For this year, these are our projections for our residential, we spent $2.1 million. For our BOSI's, $2.4 million. We, our cost out was at $4.5 million. So we're looking at, with state aid coming back, this is a projection, because we don't have those numbers, we're looking at possibly getting back through state aid around $3.4 million back from this year's numbers.
Don, can you just explain why, to them, why the aidable rate, like BOSI's is aidable at 60%, and then the private is 80%? So that's why, Mike, if you look at it, the higher rate for the residential and private programs are the higher aidable rate. So they're 80%, and then BOSI's are 60%.
So in 2015-16, the non-aidable portion was $1,240,000, and then for this year, we have about $1.1 million, so.
Right, because remember, the aid comes back the following year. So when you're talking about the expenditure in the budget, you have to make sure that you have it all allocated on the budget side, because then the aid is generated in the state the following year.
So, you know, we spent last year $3.9 million. The $2.66 we're getting back is actually, we're getting it back in this school year.
In this school year.
So do you know how much we got back from the 14-15 school year?
Not off the top of my head, but we could give you that. Yeah.
So the $2.6?
Looking for 14-15 expenditure, got back in 15-16 revenues, is that what you're asking?
Right, and then the $2.6 is going to come back next year, or is this year?
I know you're a math guy, so if you do a proportion with the 15-16, and was the private and the BOSI's with the proportion of the 16-17, then you can figure out with the 80% aidable rate, you know, 60%.
But we'll see the $2.66 come back in the 2016-2017?
Right, it's included, it's not addition, it's not in addition to the state aid proposal that we receive, it's part of it, so that's one of the components of the state aid, is the reimbursement for special ed.
The ratio math only works if the ratio's consistent year to year, though.
And they have been. The percentage reimbursement has not changed.
Yeah, but the ratio between BOSI's and private, right?
You'd have, right, you have to multiply.
You'd have to know what the data is to verify the ratio is consistent year to year.
So are these total expenditures for all the special ed students, or only the?
Out-of-district.
So only for the out-of-district, so with the 69 in 2015-16, right?
Yes, that's correct. So these are the tuition and program costs that we paid out, and then what they're describing is then what the reimbursable rate is that comes back as part of our overall line, as part of our statement.
Is the, so is the special ed budget for students that are educated within the district, is that somehow separated out, though, from the regular? All the budget codes for special ed are in the general fund of 2250, and that relates to special ed across the board. So students that are receiving services in-house would be teacher salary, and then anything that relates to that, if related services, you know, for PT, for example, that's contracted, that would all be included in the budget. These happen to be specifically two different line items, one would be tuitions that we pay out of district, and then the other's BOSI's. So those are two line items. If you have a class that's co-taught by a special ed teacher and a regular teacher, but that regular teacher also has regular classes, is it divided up that? The regular education teacher's salary goes into the regular education budget code, and the salary for the integrated teacher, the special ed teacher, or the teaching assistants that are related to the special ed go into a separate code.
But what I think you're asking is the per pupil expenditure more for a special ed student?
Right, I'm just wondering how you come up with those numbers, because you are mandated to come up with those numbers, right?
Yeah.
So how does that work?
So you would add the salary, you can take the average salaries of the general teachers at the building, and then the average salaries of the special, or you can take the actual salaries with the benefits, and then you would add it, divide it by how many students are in the class. So if it's a secondary level where they teach five classes, you'd only do it for that one class.
And will we be seeing any numbers like that as part of the budget? You will. Actually, you're going to get a blown-out version of all of the budget codes. The issue becomes when we do special ed so early, and we rush them, they're not done with annual reviews, and it will make a difference if it's a BOSI's or a private placement, and obviously makes a difference for state aid, but it also makes a difference in the budget line, so you'll be able to see that. We're almost, we're tweaking those numbers a little bit, but overall, the next board workshop is about staffing in its totality, so that's where it will come out.
So are the in-district, you know, aides and special ed teachers, do they get aidable as well?
No.
That's?
So where?
They make a threshold, so the state sets a threshold that if their per pupil cost for to educate that student is over a certain limit, then you could get 60% aid, like a high cost BOSI's getting.
Or just the overage, over that limit?
Yes, it's just on the overage. So for example, if the threshold is $40,000 for student services, you would tally up all the related staffing costs affiliated with that student, teacher time, you know, proportional to how many students are being served by that teacher, teacher assistance support, related service support, how many sessions, all of that comes part of the calculation. And then for any of those costs that exceed the, you know, ballpark, $40,000, $37,000, $40,000 per year, those become the excess amount. So for some student services, whether they're in out-of-district programs, or, and that's primarily when we see higher costs, the range of cost for programming could be anywhere from $20,000 as student program expenses, for a student maybe who is in a more intensive, but not necessarily requiring a lot of various related services or high frequency of services, to as much as $120,000 for the student to be a part of that program. That's where costs beyond what's considered the, you know, expected average cost are aidable as excess cost aid.
Okay, but if you're out of district, it's all aidable if you're?
Right, and that's why, that's why the reimbursement rate for approved private school settings is higher, 80 cents on every dollar we expend, than, because those are considered separate settings and more intensive services, as compare, and their tuitions are kind of set, but there's an additional, there's an additional excess cost already factored into that, as compared to BOSI's level services that are aidable, or the 56 and 56 and a half, 56.6%. But we, what we call stack, we have to do accounting for, you know, for students with their needs, for our internal students, students who are served within our own school programs, those youngsters that typically exceed the thresholds are those youngsters that may have, may related services, as well as possibly one-on-one teacher aid support. For most of our typical students, even with related service support, based on the settings that they're in, they frequently do not meet those thresholds. But we do have some ability to recoup money for in-district programming, but it's certainly not at the same rate as out-of-district programming.
So some resources that we do try to provide through the general and IDA funds is supplies and supplemental instruction, specialized instruction, assistive technology for some of the students that require that, the therapies and adaptive equipment for our students. We have contracts for evaluations, for out-of-district evaluations through neuropsych, or assistive technology evaluation, student case consultation and professional development. We have the contracted services for student programs, again, through the BOSI's, the private day schools, physical therapy, transition vocational, work-based learning. And then we're also covering our software, which is the Frontline IEP Direct, and we're looking at adding the Citrus Sync software this school year.
Are those, the software, is that more to help with scheduling and monitoring the progress of each student, or?
Frontline IEP Direct is a, well, you have to have a mandated IEP software program, so that allows us to manage the students' records, hold the meetings, progress track all the meetings that we're having, all the data that we come in, generates all the consent forms. It follows the timelines and expectations that we're bound to under special education. The Citrus Sync is, we're the only district in pretty much the county that does not have the Citrus Sync, and what that will do is- And what that will do is that we'll speak to our Power School data so that we're not having information that is in two different places that could be incorrect. So everything would just be reading off, one of our main frames would be our Power School.
Is there any software that's needed for special accommodations?
Yes, we have assistive technology. So we have some students even in district that require, and our out-of-district. Some of our out-of-district students who require iPads for communication purposes, we are responsible for that. And also purchasing the apps for those, in the cases, the specialized cases. In district, there are some students that do require a computer for them, for the text-to-speak software. So again, we have a whole, in our annual review document, we have a whole assistive technology justification form that we're starting to put in this year so that we can manage and understand better how we're meeting the students' needs through the assistive technology. An assistive technology could also be a slant board, it could be a specialized chair, you know, so it's not just the technology piece, it's other pieces.
A pencil.
A pencil can be assistive technology with a little grip on it.
Okay, and, but that assistive technology doesn't fall under this category, software? Like, does it, something, a little different category?
No, it's in one of the budget lines for the other pieces of technology.
And for the, the annual review handbook, it would be great if, once that's completed, if it's shared with the board to, to sort of limit these, this level of detailed questions and then also-
Also make a copy.
You know, it's all, can you have it electronically?
It was all piece now.
When it's ready.
I mean, we can, I just, I'll let you guys tell.
You can read through that and take notes.
But I, just because it's, I don't know if everyone knows that, in an ongoing way, the board is asked to consider and vote on related, issues related to PPS and students. And so it's really great to be informed of some of these details.
And that's a document that all special ed teachers and staff have, so that we're on the same page, requiring forms, processes and procedures and expectations. So these are our early projections for the elementary building. So it's, so we're going to start, I'm projecting of opening up a kindergarten self-contained in an ICT classroom. That would be the co-taught classroom and the self-contained at Sargent. This year, the kindergarten cohort started at Glennum. So what we want to do is minimize the transitions and move that cohort to first grade. So it looks like when you're looking at here, there's a smattering of programs in each of the buildings, and that is true. But a lot of these programs started at kindergarten and we continue them throughout. If there are programs that a student needs and they're in a different school, we will help with the transition to have them attend a program that's, meets their educational needs and a program, it could be, they could be a second grade student at Sargent School next year and they're going to need the support of an ICT classroom, they would be receiving that at South Avenue.
So they, so they would spend their day at, at South Avenue?
They would become a student at South Avenue.
Is, is there a reason why we're not having programs in the schools to better service? Because I, I just, I heard what you said, but I'm just seeing the gap. So at Glennum, there is no specialized services for second or fourth grader?
No, so how this continuum was started several years back, we're just having to follow that same continuum. Where classes start at the kindergarten level and weed themselves through so that the students can remain there. If we split up sections and, and we're moving a lot of students. And so again, this would be, this would have to be something that we would have to talk about later on, about redistricting or looking at students differently. But then what we wanted to do this year is follow that continuum so that we have the less amount of students having to be transferred to other schools.
Okay.
Because they're already in current programs.
Right.
Oh, so they stay in the same school, they wouldn't have to be swapping from-
Right.
-school to school, is that why, like you have the maps in Forestal?
The continuum.
Same staff, and they're just doing the different grades at different times of the day, is that how that works?
No, the, the teacher, the teacher in the K1 maps class is there all day with those students.
Okay.
But then if the children in the kindergarten or first grade maps, as they move to second grade, they don't have to go to another building. They would have that continuum continuity of, as a second grader, they would stay in the building and move to the second grade maps class. So same thing, for example, with Glennum, that next year, we would anticipate that the ICT second grade and the self-contained 112-1 second grade would be at Glennum. So again, the children wouldn't have to move buildings. We can't, we don't have the number of students that would justify having several classes throughout the district. We would have two students in an ICT class in Glennum, and then we might have four at JVF and three at Sargent, which just isn't cost-effective unfortunately. So we have all the children who need that particular integrated co-teaching class in one building.
So just, so just for classification, so like, for example, the first grade Glennum class, that cohort, they started in Glennum in kindergarten, like you said, and they go up. That, that cohort actually consists of students from the different elementary areas, and then you've consolidated it in Glennum to start their K and start their progress through Glennum in this program. What happens with this teacher, though, the teacher's able to teach first, second, third and fourth, or they switch, you move the teachers around?
We talk about staffing at the end of the year. So specialized student, teachers certifications are a little different, so they have the fluid ability to be able to move around. So for an example, this year's fifth grade is at Sargent School. We're, that cohort of fifth grade students are going to round out. So we have those teachers that we could look at, were we looking at other programs in the district, at Sargent, to assign them to, to the appropriate classrooms.
I see, so the, so the kindergarten special ed teacher can, can teach all the way up to fifth grade? Okay, thank you.
No, I've been, you know, watching this over the years, not with a ton of attention, but it seemed like at one point, all of the special ed students were at Forestal, and then Forestal became a school in need because of the way the testing goes.
So in all of these, yes, Sargent, so in the many, many years that I've been at the district, there has been different configurations about how to develop the special edca-, special education programs at the elementary. And as Kate was saying, the numbers are not enough to have the same type of programs in each of the buildings. So there have been several configurations. At one point, Glennum, I had the most and the highest enrollment, which was my heaven. But then when it became high stakes with the testing and the testing results, then we became a, a school in need. So then I guess one of the, the things that, they were splitting the program up, so it became Glennum and Sargent. So I think over the past couple of years, when they were looking at, you know, spreading out the programs in each of the buildings so that we could bring it special attention, not just to one school, but throughout the district, is where I think the continuum of starting at a kindergarten and moving that, that continuum all the way to fifth grade.
Right, so it is that, that testing pressure, basically, the test score pressure that, I mean, I don't know, it seems like a, a good, you know, a good way to do it in a lot of ways, but that was sort of the origin of the, of spreading the kids across the-
I can't speak to that, because I wasn't the director there. I was only the building principal, and I have my philosophy, but I can't speak to the decisions that were made prior.
Is there sufficient room in the elementary schools to have the cohorts spread out like this? Okay.
Yep.
Maps.
And like kindergarten and Sargent, I know there was, there was a, a lot of kids in the kindergarten, visiting Sargent as well. Did this have any effect on that?
No, this is Sargent coming up for the following school year, the 17-18.
17-18, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Can you define maps before I ask my question, please?
Maps was a classroom that was created again a couple of years back, and those are students that either require a very small classroom structure of a 1-6-2. That could have been students that are under the autism category, students with other health impaired, but they needed a smaller student-teacher ratio. So I believe that when they developed the maps class, they were students at the district who was also considering bringing students back from out-of-district placements and bringing them in district and trying to mimic programs that would match their needs.
Is there, is there the acronym, MAPS? Is there, we don't know what it stands for.
So what it stands for, and again, I, we inherited this, it stands for the management, academic, physical and social development needs of, of kids, or what we refer to in special education as present levels of performance. They previously, several years back, going back more than five years, at one, one point were considered severe communication disorder-focused classrooms. They became, they evolved into classrooms that supported students on the autism spectrum, but they are classrooms that really were focused and continue to be focused on students not just with autism as a diagnosis, but with other developmental disability needs. And again, students, as Dawn had said, who require either throughout the day individualized, highly individualized instruction, and that's what the high adult-to-student ratio represents. So they're not youngsters who we would expect to be in whole group instruction throughout the course of their whole day. There's a lot of individualization of their needs.
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to wrap my head around this, the programs that are being offered in our school buildings for students, and it's nothing against all of you, just I have a few questions. Regarding the continuum of services, so just so, they can have a max of 12 students in those 12 1-1 class, max of 12, otherwise you have to get a state variance, but, so there's not, you're saying that there's not enough students to then have a second grade, that they have to go move to a other building?
You know, I know that in the past on the board, we had some concerns about students transitioning and needing to go from one building to another building year after year, especially for our autistic students where transitions are difficult, but I just, I, I just am trying to figure out, like, number, we have so many students in district that are classified, like, I'm just trying to figure out what our numbers are specifically elementary, and then is it something else that we need to look at for them regarding? I mean, an ICT class can have up to 12 classified students, and it can have up to. It's ideal, right?
That's the regulation.
Right.
So we looked at if, for an example, second grade self-contained needs two sections. If we moved that to another building, we're moving a lot of students. The way the structure and framework has been developed, it's going to require us moving a lot of students. If we maintain the current structure, we're, right now, we're projecting moving four students. Whereas the number would have been pretty significant if we spread it out amongst all the buildings.
Are you, is your question-
No, I'm really like, I'm-
I think, I think if you did this structure, next year-
I just don't understand why you can't have a, a program in the schools.
Okay.
What is your, is that what you're asking?
I'm just wondering why you don't have certain special education programs. I'm sorry, this might be a discussion. Why you can't have or offer some type of continuum of services, so at, like-
In each building, you mean?
Right. You don't have to have kids move from there.
No, because in South Avenue, when they go from second to third, the-
They're moving childrens.
Not, not- There's a possibility that they move at least two to three times, right?
No.
So, if I may, so that was part of the past, because before I came in as, as director for the New York, what happened was we had designated at every grade level where and in what school the special class and the ICT support services would be provided. And those were staying relatively static. So we were moving kids grade to grade, because what we were, what we were emphasizing is that the teachers that were providing that service, either together or in cooperation, you know, were kind of blended there. What we started to do last year was to begin to at least loop the, the classrooms up. So where there was from one year, a class or a certain level of support, then in the following year, rather than saying that, that service for that grade level is in another school, it was if that was there, then that would loop, loop up into the next grade. The real problem, and this speaks to Ms. Patchen, and we talked about this last year, is that we have a very two-tiered system and not quite the, the full continuum. And a year ago, we talked about that, because a year ago, we really were absent youngsters that received the least restrictive amount of services, which are resource room instruction, supplemental instruction on targeted skill needs, as well as consultant teacher support services, which is supporting the learning strategies and the organizational skills, but that the student is engaging in the general core instruction. Integrated co-teaching, as it was presented from several years ago and kind of evolved, has always been a little bit of this morph, but became known as where, how, where and how we were providing the least restrictive services and that, you know, we believe that was why we no longer needed consultant teacher support, because we were doing integrated co-teaching. Integrated co-teaching is actually by definition, the delivery of specialized instruction delivered by both the general education and the special education teacher. So there, and it is to reduce the instructional, it is to reduce the instructional ratio of student to teacher that's delivering that instruction and allowing for the maximum amount of differentiation of, of the curriculum. So that's different than the provision of organizational support, where a youngster needs some level of support, but is able to engage in the general classroom curriculum expectations and requirements. All students, regardless of an IEP or not, have a need and benefit from differentiated instruction. But that's just not part of how we operate. We have a gap of kids come into classification and kind of bypass some of the least, the less restrictive support services. And so that's what we have, but we also aren't going to fix that overnight without the continued support that we're, that needs to happen in professional development to support what should instruction look like robustly, whether we're delivering it in a special class section of only, you know, a special education teacher delivering instruction for students with disabilities with intensive to moderate academic or more behavioral needs, to what are the needs delivered in a general class instruction delivered by two teachers that is allowing for intensive instructional delivery. And so that's part of all the learning curve. And I know Ms. Candello and her staff have been working and batting that around. But, but that's where we've got some of these gaps. So should we be able to have a certain level of services that are provided in every school? That's the goal of where we need to grow to. Is that going to happen overnight? Not with throwing, not without throwing a lot of things upside down on, on its head. And so there is a balance too, because we can change it in the numbers or the placement, but are we all, is everybody going to be ready so that we're not shortchanging the quality of instruction for, for our youngsters? And again, there are no, there are no real easy answers to all of this. I know those are the questions they've been, they've been grappling with.
So now I'm more, but I will say that like I, so it sounds like the skill set is housed in terms of the people, this is where the strongest skill sets are, that match up with the needs, and that over a long lens, the infrastructure of being able to provide that skill set in each building, in every setting, is, is a part of a professional development plan. That sounds separate, that sounds like, so this is meeting student needs and then that's part of curriculum and professional development?
Well, it, it's twofold, because right now, we have youngsters in these settings, and so we can equalize across schools for who's there right now. The place where we grow it is as we look at youngsters who are coming in to be referred for evaluation through CSC, and then how do we provide services to them in different ways? It's really the way it grows.
So this is adapting an inherited plan while you're building something more lasting?
But, but that's not what I understand, I mean, with the exception of JV Forestal, I mean, I'm counting 21, I mean, with JV Forestal, I'm counting 21 sections or classes or how they go. And, and I see that there's, there's 112 plus one in all the schools except JV Forestal. I, I think we have-
Different grades.
I mean, yeah, but at different grades, but the teachers are certified, the teachers are different grades. So what happens is, I, I kind of see that the capabilities, I may be missing something, but I kind of see the capabilities are being spread out with the schools, it's just that we're consolidating all the kids in similar grades, so they're going to, they're going to same class together.
Yes.
So that, you know, like, I, I, I mean, I'm going to say the Glennum first grade again, those kids aren't all in the- again, those kids aren't all in the, in the Glenham Elementary School area, I mean, I'm sure they come from South, J.B., Support, Sergeants, but they're all coming together in the sort of first grade there, and it kind of rotates, looks like.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ma.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add the one thing in terms of having the integrated co-teaching class, the ICT, and the smaller class ratio, the special class of 112, one, at the same grade level in the same building, is a benefit, because sometimes children are able to, during the course of the school year, move to the less restrictive environment of the integrated co-teaching class. So there's the, then that becomes available to that student, we can move them to the less restrictive environment classroom without them having to change buildings.
So for example, as a principal at Glenham, and this is what I want us to move towards, is if I have a self-contained class, and usually we had a grade three and four, but we had an ICT class of third grade and fourth grade, what I want is all of our students who are in that smaller class to be fully mainstreamed in all specials, lunch and recess, and I've been doing that for the past four years, and saw such a decrease in behavioral referrals and an increase in student participation in involving the school-wide activities. And in order for me to do that, I had to have a matching class, a least restrictive environment class of an ICT to help support that. Moving forward, I want to see that same model happen in each of our elementary buildings, where we are allowing all of our students to participate in a larger group setting with the additional supports of the teaching assistant that's part of the ICT, the integrated classroom, and the self-contained classroom. And so, without knowing that I was going to be here speaking to you in this role, that's something I started independently, just to see how students were progressing.
You connected them to the ICT class?
Yeah.
Why couldn't they just be connected to?
No problem.
I've done that also, Georgia, for the classrooms that I may not have. So if there was a different cohort, and I only have one ICT classroom, but I had six kids that could go out, they were connected with a generalized classroom also.
Okay.
So however I could get the kid, the students to be able to be mainstreamed fully in specials and art, and specials, lunch and recess, we manipulated it, and we made sure in the scheduling that we could provide the support so the students would be successful. But it makes it easier, so if you have a self-contained student that is showing progress and progression in the area of math, and they could possibly go into a least restrictive environment, you have that sister class of the ICT right next door, so that you could provide those opportunities to start pushing the students out of the least restrictive environment. So for the middle school, this year, we've had the 112, one special class and a 12, one ICTs. We're projecting increasing our self-contained classrooms to a 15, one, with a TA support into the classrooms. We're looking at a 12, one ICT to continue, and then we're adding the study skills, the 15, one, which does not require the teaching assistant. And we will still continue to have resource room at the middle school level, with a focus of reading support and/or math support. We have an ADL class, the students who are currently at Forrestal, that are old enough to now go into the middle school, will create a classroom over at the, at the middle school level with the students there. Our early projections for the high school, again, we are looking at changing the model of our self-contained from a 112, one to a 15, one with TA support. There is currently a STEP class, I'm not sure what the acronym was, again, it's an adopted name that's been there.
Student Transitional Education Program.
Thank you. And we are looking at that number of, we've looked at the data for the past couple of years, right now, that's a 112, one, but our numbers have been low enough that we could look at really a 181 program and reducing the need for an additional teaching assistant, and we already have an existing ADL program there. And what I'd like to propose is considering a 112, one student, or section for grades 10 and 11, for the students that require both the academic and the behavioral supports in a smaller classroom setting, that a 15, one would not provide for them. So when we're looking at cost reductions, we're looking at contracted services, sending our contracts out for an RFP development, the usage of paraprofessionals, and the one-to-one aid, in the annual review guidance document, you'll see a whole document about rationale for one-to-one aids and the supports for it. We review all of our out-of-district placement students and considering alternative replacements of in-district programs. Review, revision of current processes and criteria of our service levels is what we've been talking about. As Amory was saying, the stack form for our out-of-district costs, and compliance with outcomes of state review. We had a state review done in the 15, 16 school years, so there are some areas that we're out of compliance for, that we have to make sure that we are back into compliance for.
So your bullet three, I mean, we did get a presentation from the, from Ron and the transportation, and we transport to a lot of schools. I'd be interested to know what your findings were for bullet number three, just a comment.
So when we look at out-of-district placements, we look at our existing programs that we already have students in as our, our first measure, so we know that we already have transportation needs there. When we send packets out for these out-of-district placements, the programs take a look at, first of all, if they have a spot open, and at times during the school year, it's more challenging to find a spot open, and depending on the individual student's needs, if the program that we currently are busing to does not match those students' needs, then we have to look at other additional programs that would best meet the students' needs. But our first line of defense is that we try to look at the programs that we already currently bus our students to.
Is there any additional programs, I mean, are there enough students for an additional program? That we, that we don't have to take the kids out of district?
Oh, to, to provide in-district?
Yes, yes.
There's always opportunities to look at developing program in-house, and that's where we need to have. So, over the years, we bring students back into program, but what we need to do also, and be really cognizant of about, is if we start adding more internal programs, we're looking at staff, but we also have to provide the professional development and the additional supports, and sometimes we shortchange those opportunities for kids to be successful if we bring them back. So I am not comfortable right now to say that we're going to bring back a program, because I don't have the confidence that we have all the other additional supports.
Okay.
And that's bottom, you know, bottom line, we want to make sure that we can support. But that is definitely a long-term goal in the next couple of years, for the three of us to take a look at that, and then propose what would that look like for programming needs for in-house.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add to that, having, you know, been at the high school, when the STEP class program was created, that was a group of students that were brought back from out-of-district programs, and that continues to be some of the students, as well as some of the students from Rambow. But it's a ninth grade program to help students transition into an in-district program. It was originally set up that way, we've also found it beneficial for some of our students transitioning from Rambow to the high school, to have the appropriate supports in place for them to be successful, earn those credits that are so important as a ninth grader, so that they are then ready for 10th grade and being part of the larger classroom settings.
So is the ADL program currently at the middle school, it's new, we have several students who are currently in the middle school who requires ADL program. So instead of sending them out to district, we're creating one in the middle schools that they can stay in district, and we can move up the students from the elementary schools who need ADL program to also stay in district and utilize that program as well.
Well, thank you, and, and we'd be curious to know if you do need resources, you know, what they will be, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For the RFPs, do you go out for RFPs every year for contracted services? Does it include all the locations where we send the out-of-district students to?
Our contracted services could be through the skilled nursing services, so I'm looking at a couple of different out-of-district skilled nursing services. There are some of our students that need a skilled nurse on the bus with them, and in their specialized program, so we are working on the RFPs for those. We also have them out for contracted services for professional development when people come in, for other outside evaluations that have to be done, a neuropsychological evaluation or an assistive technology. So right now, we're looking at the new contracts, we're sending them out, and our current law firm is going to start receiving them to take a look at.
But we don't, we don't negotiate or try to get better pricing on the facilities?
Yeah. That's, most of the facilities have a, a set tuition rate by New York State Ed, so we are, it, it's a billing process, so if we place a student in a special education setting, we are billed for the tuition rate that they have, that's set.
So it's not negotiable?
No.
Eric says that's it.
It's rate setting by New York State Ed.
I'm sure it's the best price.
Well, it's based on their, so it's, it's an analysis based upon their costs-
Okay.
-for students.
Is, is all the services done, it doesn't sound to me that all services are done by private contracting. I guess some schools have some special services in-house, and we send kids to them, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Is there, and you say some kids, there's difficult, you haven't been able to, you haven't been able to find a good placement for them, because they don't have a, a service, I guess, that you were able to find, or some, is that something that is germane to quite a few schools in this area, that if we pull together, then maybe we'll have enough kids for that service?
Special classes?
Yeah, it's a class, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's the benefit of BOSEs, whether it's the Dutchess County BOSEs or Putnam, is they do kind of have those specialized classes that are providing the service for many districts, for those particular students.
There are directors that will send out emails to say, and I have a student profile, do you have a program in district that you have that could match this profile, that we can contract with you? So those forums are available, and there are other districts that are offering those opportunities, you know, so that is always a possibility if other districts have programs.
Okay. Yeah, cause I mean, I, I'm not totally familiar with Westchester's school districts, but I thought they were also doing the kind of-
We, we have students through Putnam-Northwestchester BOSEs, so through those BOSEs programs, we have our students in there.
Yes, but I'm saying is, is I think, yeah, so there is, there is schools that provide services, but if, is there enough schools here in Dutchess County that if we provided in-house, we would get those kids here and get their funds as well to fund that program?
But we would also have to pay tuition, so it would be the same thing, so if they had a program in another district, we would still have to pay tuition like we would pay the BOSEs.
You're saying build the program in our district.
I'm going to contact that with those districts.
It's a, it's a basic, like, it's an investment, you'd have to know that you're either pooling together, you would build a program for students that you, if you had a bunch of students here, but then, you know, it's not to say that that would continue to have the same population, so you're, you're making an investment in, in all of the things that would go with housing a program like that, and then hoping that it would-
We'd be much closer than Westchester BOSEs, if that was the, the population that we have enough.
Anthony, I think you're looking at it from a broad sense, you got to look at the individual needs of the students, so you want to know what the individual needs of the students are first, before you can even develop-
Not something that can be done within the next budget, you're basically-
No.
Right.
And I'm not saying that we should not look at individual students as individuals, what I'm saying though, is when we do look at students as individuals, places like Westchester BOSEs exist because there's enough individuals to build a class, so I'm just saying-
Through many districts, through many school districts.
Yes, yes.
In a highly, in a, in a highly populated county.
Yeah, so I mean, and I'm not thinking on Westchester-
Does it have to pertain to the budget here?
No, I just, I saw planning, and I was asking clarifying questions.
So, our future plans, did we go to the CTS? Oh, we did. Okay. So for this coming up school year, we're looking at changing our special class, our 112 ones, to make them 15 ones at the middle school and high school, and maintaining the teaching assistant, that is a critical part of the program. We're looking at the ICT classes at Rambow eighth grade this coming up school year, we are going to provide services, ICT support and ELA and math, and then provide consultant teacher and/or the teaching assistant in the science and social studies, to start with the transition of the least restrictive environment. I'm proposing a possible new position of a transition coordinator, and I have a slide that'll talk to you about what that purpose would be. Our elementary ICT education teachers, the percentage of their time will be in the classroom, and we're looking at additional resource room support on student IEPs. The high school STEP class, we're looking at redefining the program criteria, reducing the TA, and making the program a 181, and we're considering adding a specialized 112, one program for behavior and academic support for students in 10th and 11th grade. And we're also looking at, if we have any future vacancies that occur in both of our OT or social work, that we're looking for adding a criteria that they would have experience and some behavioral support and work, like, through a BCBA, for working with students that require supports in a program, that, that have special needs of behavioral incentive programs. That seems to be the, what other districts that I've been calling and talking to, that they're adding when they're looking at adding social work and occupational therapists into their district, a lot of these professionals do come in with that experience, so that we can enhance some of our smaller classrooms with the behavioral supports and accommodations. We're looking at possibly in the 18, 19 school year, for both the Rambow, at the seventh and eighth grade classrooms, moving the, the shift down to ICT support for ELA and math only, and consultant teacher support for those students in science and social studies and/or teaching assistant support. We're proposing at the high school to provide programming in the co-taught classrooms, in the region-supported classrooms, so for ninth grade, it would be an ELA, math and science, which teaching assistant support would be in the social studies. In 10th grade, it would be in math, social studies with teaching and support, and eighth grade, I'm sorry, in English. In 11th grade, we're looking at support in the social studies in English with teaching assistant support in math, and in 12th grade, English, 12, PIG and economics. In the future, I'd like us to consider, as we're bringing in more programs into the district and looking at student profiles, is to offer two behavioral specialists for the district, to talk about special programs, provide the supports for students that are coming into the district, work on the functional behavior assessments and the behavior intervention plans that require a lot of monitoring, progress monitoring and support through that, and that would be through the examination of our out-of-district profiles.
On the prior slide for 17 and 18, which of those bullets would be increased personnel?
Actually, it would be decreasing in the need for personnel, if we increase the self-contained class from a 12, 1-1, 112, one to a 15, one, and if we're looking at providing ICT programming support for two out of the four core subjects.
Okay. So I think your question was which one would be a new position?
That would be the transition.
Well, I see the transition coordinator is a new position, but overall, you know, it's one of the things that I get a feel from the presentation, overall, what, what is your proposed headcount looking like, you know?
You mean, what's the net change?
Yeah, looking at increase, you know, increasing next year by so many teachers or decreasing less students.
And it sounds like there's, there's some change.
So at the middle school right now, we're looking at an increase of 1.5 specialized teachers. At the elementary, we have a retirement which we have to replace, and we were looking at an additional three teachers, but if we pull the resource room teachers in and have the ICT teachers cover classes, we're looking at an addition of one more teacher at the elementary level.
Is it concluding the, considering the retirement as well?
The retirement's something separate, in addition to the retirement.
Right, so the retirement and when you add one more.
Retirement has, right.
Mm-hmm.
So, and also, it seems like this behavioral skill set, is, is important, is that part of what's going to allow you to increase the ratio in some of these rooms, while also, is it addressing the-
The hope, the goal is to provide the behavioral support so that we could look at reducing the amount of out-of-district placements, so the referrals that we have students in-house, if we could provide the additional support, you know, so that we could show that we did everything that we could in-house to, to keep them here, and that would be our goal, is to reduce the number of students that are in, currently in our programs, having to go to out-of-district placements. So under our umbrella, we also worked through a 504 accommod- So, under our umbrella, we also work through a 504 accommodation plans. And these are really for the general education students who require 504 plans. And over the past two years, our 504 referrals have significantly increased. But there are different mandates coming from the state that allow additional provisions for students to require 504 plans.
That's me. That first paragraph up there talks about the people involved with a child that can make the referral to the CPSE. So, to kind of summarize that, that paragraph, it's, you know, can be parents. It can be a teacher involved with a student. It could be somebody who's providing, already providing services through early intervention. So, there are a variety of people that are able to make the referral to preschool special education services and start the process for determining whether that child qualifies to receive services as a preschooler. So, that's the children from age three to five. This year, currently, we have 97 students receiving preschool special education services. And it runs a continuum, just like in the school age students, where we have children attending full-day programs provided around the county for different levels of support for those students. And some of our students attend half-day programs to receive support. And then, other students don't require the support of a program, of a preschool program, but receive what we call itinerate services. So, the speech therapist or the physical therapist or occupational therapist or special education teacher travels to the student. And that could be in their home or they could be providing services in a daycare setting or in a nursery school that the parent has the child attending. We have run into the problem because children kind of age into preschool programs, so they can't start receiving preschool special education services till they turn three. So, that can happen all throughout the school year, if not tied to the school calendar. So, we do find often that children who turn three in January, February and March, there's a shortage of service providers for those students or programs, special education programs for preschoolers are already full. So, we then try to supplement with those itinerant services as best we can for those students to address their needs. This winter, we started a conversation with Mid-Hudson Regional Early Education Center in talking about next year that they would help support us in providing integrated co-teaching preschool classroom in one of our universal pre-play, pre-K classrooms. So, the advantage, there are many advantages. When Dawn and I started the conversation, it was also positive in terms of all the pluses that came with it. We kind of kept waiting for the other shoe to drop, thinking there had to be a negative. But we have not found one. One of the main things, adding this potential classroom to in-district, is it will provide at least eight, up to eight spots for children to receive special education, you know, integrated co-teaching classroom. So, it sort of guarantees us a location for some of our students. It will cut down on children kind of waiting for a spot to open at other programs in the district. They would also provide similar sort of enrichment in that classroom where they do music therapy at their center in Beacon. They would also provide that kind of service to our students in the universal pre-K program in-house. They would also provide teacher development for our pre-K teachers. And it would also make for a nice transition if we have preschool students who are in that setting and they will require that setting as a kindergartner. It just provides nice communication between staff to make that transition to kindergarten that much smoother for the child. The receiving teacher, receiving kindergarten teacher will have a lot more information and insight on those particular students.
So, we're looking at, right now, we have a contract for our school-to-work program for some of our students. Also, we're following, there is a new, there is a regulation for CDOs, for college and career requirements for students, not just in the special education, but for our general education students. And we need to start this process when the students start turning the age of 14.
Question, what does CDOs mean?
And what's that? It's career development.
Go ahead.
Career development.
Career development, occupational studies.
Thank you, because I'm dead right now.
Thank you.
So, what we're finding is that we have more work to do in the whole overall CDOs process for our general ed and special education students. There has to be paperwork and tracking of what the student's service is, what they're eligible for, helping them with the transition, becoming college and career-ready. And also, I'm looking at trying to tie in that person to also work with our school-to-work program that we are currently contracting out. And we can keep that inside, in-house, where we could also engage more students, not just our students with special needs, but looking at the community-based organizations to help provide opportunities for students to have those CDOs experiences outside in the community.
Who would this person report to?
Me and the principals at the building.
Okay. I was just asking because I know you're PPS and you were talking about this being really available to everybody, so, which is a good thing. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
A question. You may have to read about, you don't have to flip back, but I think it's wonderful you brought the person in. Did you find in terms of cost to be more cost-effective to bring them in? Because you're not using their light energy and electricity.
So, what's going to happen is they cover the cost of the specialized teacher and they would be covering the cost of the teaching assistant that we currently have in our pre-K grant. They'll cost, they will pay for a portion of our teaching assistant into the program. They will also be providing professional development for the whole pre-K. So, now, I'm going to wear my pre-K director's hat, my additional job and responsibility. So, oftentimes, we're looking at providing professional development for a pre-K team. They will all, they will build that in and provide that for us.
Sounds like it's definitely cost-effective as well, as good for the children.
Better for the education.
Yes, yes. And we kept saying this is too good to be true, but that's what we're finding. And the majority of the cost for preschool services is provided by the county.
Not through the district.
Not through the district. We kind of oversee it and facilitate it, but most of the cost is absorbed.
Thanks, Graham.
You're welcome.
We're almost done. So, for our summer programs, we have students in our maths and our ADL classroom that require the extended school year. And there's an eligibility requirement from New York State that talks about students falling underneath the requirements for extended school year. We have students in our current maths and ADL that will need to have the six weeks of summer programming in the summer with the supports of the special education teachers. Looking at providing the summer reading support, not just for our students with IEPs, but in all students who follow certain criteria for grades one through five for the summer. We'll be providing screening for eligibility of the program. We're looking at a six-week program. And one of the requirements is the parents have to be committed to it and attend the one-day parent orientation on how to enhance and bring the literacy and the reading supports in the home.
Is this a continuation of something that happened last summer?
Yes. Some of the curriculum and planning and professional development work that I'd like to include this summer is including middle school, high school discussions on the special class 15-1, working on curriculum planning and mapping on the executive functioning skills. So, we know exactly what we are working with, with the students under those criterias. I'm looking right now, providing professional development opportunities for teachers who teach in the co-taught classroom for both general ed and special ed students, if they're interested at the K6 level. And I'm looking at, right now, I am currently involved in a three-full-day training on the FBAs and the BIPs, the Functional Behavioral Assessment. It is a pretty big undertaking. And I'm looking at having our district response to intervention team members and the rest of our school psychologists to participate, talking with Bosse's to see if they would offer another summer workshop, another full three days, which they would offer also to the county. That's it.
I think all the questions were asked during it.
Mistaken? Your intervention program, you said it was provided by the county?
There's your answer.
Are they on?
The BIP?
No.
No.
If she does the summer workshop, then that'll be through Bosse's. It'll be available to everyone in the county.
In the county, yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you. So, the budgeting piece of this? Because I see, most of the other presentations, we see the numbers, we see the budget.
Right. So, because we are, because this is a unique department, so this is still a work in progress. You'll have it by the next board meeting, but I'll have a better idea of what, you know, because really, it'll, it's plus and minus out of district and Bosse's. So, we needed to get a better handle on it and we will bring that forward. You'll see it at the next board meeting and then the two board meetings after that is when you vote on the entire budget. So, we'll be presenting, we'll be giving you a better idea of what the budget will look like and need to tell you.
This was a great overview and educational experience about, you know, PPS and special education. Will we get in the same type of presentation for general education and curriculum instruction plans?
At the next board meeting, since we only have one more workshop before you have to vote, there'll be a section on curriculum and instruction. We're going to have Mr. Wright here, along with Cecilia, to do that piece of it. But also, we're going to be talking about staffing across the district, including regular education, teachers, specials and all of that. So, that would be.
Okay. So, it'll be a similar presentation where we get to the details about, you know, what we have, what are the future plans are for adding languages? If we're doing, you know, all this stuff, what are we planning to add into the budget?
We're going to talk, well, I thought we would do, when we spoke to Mr. Wright today, the first part, we'd like to say what we're doing now, what we're going to kind of continue, right, for next year? The programs, we'd like to see what the plan is going to be, because not everything can be done in one year, especially with the cap the way it is. And that's really why we like to have the program part do there. So, for example, you know, when you're adding staff, that's the important stuff that we need to do and then kind of all tie it together. Hopefully, by the meeting that you vote on it, we'll have our final state aid numbers. The way we presented it before was here's the budget. Here we are with the cap. There's usually a difference and the things that we may have to take out.
There will be a lot of discussion on a line and basis about how to fit in the programs and the curriculum that the district needs and where it's going to come from. And that's, that's going to take a long time to get through that.
I don't understand.
Well, if you say, here's, okay, here's all the teachers and programs, here's all the costs and here's the cap, so we can't add anything else, that may not be the answer. It might be, no, we're going to add a language. No, we're going to add this. And what's going to cost and how, what are we going to use to offset that? So, we stay within the cap, but fund things that we need to do or that we want to do as a district.
So, I think what we have to do is, I think Henry has to explain what are the fixed expenditures in the budget?
Right.
So, then, we have that and then we know how much we're working with that are not fixed expenditures. And I think that would then go into the conversation as to what can we add and what can't we add.
Right. So, that's not an easy conversation to have.
Well, we, more than 50% of the budget is fixed spending, right? Based on salaries and increases and so forth. So, we're down 50% of whatever the proposed budget would be. And then, whatever other fixed expenditures we have. I know that's just the teachers is 50%, but then you've got to take the other, whatever the salaries are. So, whatever, minus those fixed expenditures, that's what we're really talking about.
But for example, if we believe that, or we believe that we need to add a language, then how does it get added in?
It's a teacher or it's a, because if you're adding, so if you're going to use the teacher, a language as an example, depending upon the language, we probably don't have the teacher. So, that's an additional FTE of the secondary teacher. So, you have that. You have conversations about class size in elementary. You have special education, additional staff. You're talking about special area teachers and how we're trying to get equity across the elementary schools.
Exactly.
Maybe adding staff, maybe not, maybe utilizing what we have currently. So, there's, there's a lot of different things. And the part of the workshop would be to present all of those things and then the board's discussion and consideration of what they feel is the things, the important things that they want to have the budget include.
It'll take more than one meeting to get through all that. Because there may be, say, there was a proposal for two, I think, two new positions here. So, are we going to balance whether those positions or we need to have?
I'm just being cognizant of all of them.
I recognize, but there's not much, but I don't want to be pushed up against the wall to have to approve a budget when we don't have all the information about what we're looking to do. Otherwise, it's another year wasted of not getting some things that we want to get done. I'm very concerned about it.
The reality of this, what we'll be able to lay out, so certainly, what are the priorities of curriculum instruction and assessment and the work that needs to happen with that and what that looks like over the next several years? Ms. Quateroni already mentioned in quick passing, but what we know, and certainly of the feedback, is that the things we'll lay out for you, what will it take? And what will it take to be able to deliver on what all of these, you know, varied concerns and needs are? And then, ultimately, what we know, just based on where the cap is and what Ms. Quateroni had presented at the last meeting, was the only increase to the, to the budget from last year to this year is about $490,000, which equates to about three and a half FTEs if we're lucky.
Right.
And so, there's lots of conversation. We'll lay out what it all looks like. We'll lay out what would be the recommendations of, in best-case scenario, what's possible, what may not be possible and where we need feedback from the board of how do you want us to prioritize? Because it is, it's a two-way. So, it's, I think it's laying out based on everything that we know about what will it take to add art at an elementary level? What will it take to change around and add to the music program, elementary through high school? What will it take for us to look at reduction of class size? And what is the, what is the guidance from the board as to what are the parameters that you would let, you want us to live within in terms of class size? So, that's one piece of it. What is, how do we improve technology at the middle school level? Because we've talked about that as a programming priority.
Right.
We've talked about high school electives and how do we increase and add to high school electives? And all of those pieces are all components. That, this budget is not going to sustain all of that. So, how do we make it happen?
But we need to be presented all of that in order to be able to try to start to make those decisions. And we haven't been presented that yet. So, I'm asking, are we going to be presented it?
Wouldn't the workshop next Monday night, when you're talking about board goals, be a discussion, a discussion? Because not having board goals and not determining what the board's priorities are makes it.
Well, but you said that it was coming from the, you said that those kind of recommendations were coming up from the building administration through the principals when you're putting your budget together. That's where you said those ideas were coming. So, it's not necessarily.
No, but I could tell you also have state mandates that we have to meet, the things that we have to meet in addition to. So, if we prioritize, just know when the state mandates are, like, we need physical education. We know we have to meet that, right? And then, there are other items or areas that we have to also address. So, I think what you're asking them to do is to be proactive and bring all of these issues to the forefront and then have a plan on how we're going to execute it, right? But know that execution would really lead us to actually meet the state mandates, which we are now out of compliance in some areas.
Right. No, that's got to be one of the pieces. In one meeting, it's very difficult to get that all done in one meeting because then we have to approve as our budget, right? So, we don't know the information or to do that.
On Monday, you said of board goals, maybe it sounds like budgets are a bit concerning the goals.
And I already responded, I'm not available next Monday, so.
We had a corner responding, but I'm just... I prefer to do goals because I think goals, we keep on taking something that's proactive and would answer a lot of questions because then we can always say, does it meet the board goals? Does it meet the goals this? And we keep on pushing it. So, I'd be proponent of talking about goals.
Very reasonable. We can't do both. I mean, it sounds like.
But we have an hour constraint because there's a diversity committee meeting at 7:30 after. Unless that wants to be canceled, I'm not the chair.
Well, like I said, we're being pushed up against the wall on this budget, which is, which is not really where we should be. And that's why we, with these presentations, have been asking a lot of questions to try to get answers so we can make some decisions. to get answers, so we can make some decisions. And I was looking forward to a curriculum instruction presentation that, and if we weren't going to be getting.
We, we weren't going to be getting it this evening with the PPS. So, again, we're talking about departments, and, you know, Dawn mentioned that there were two and a half FTEs. That's a mandated service. I have to provide that. Those are teachers that have to be provided. So there's, there's a, there's a component of what's required-
Right.
-and then there's a component of what we can add, and what we can't add, what's the plan to move it forward.
Well, there's a transition person, right? Which I think is a very good idea, but maybe we want a language over a transition person. So we even wanted to look at that.
Well, the transition person is being paid for, and it's a 611, which is one of the grants that pays for it, so.
I'm just a little confused saying what we want. It's not what we want, it's what the administrators are working closely as to what the needs are to me, students' needs. So if they're bringing a recommendation to it, yeah, we might be hearing from the public what the wants are, like, I'm hearing about class sizes, and I know there's a lot of people that are going to speak about it, and I know that mandated for PE. So we're getting in vibe with what the public wants, and we represent the public, but we also have to take what the administrators are saying that their needs are and taking it. It's not what we want, because I, I want a lot of things, but that aren't being presented, so.
Well, we haven't heard what the administrators want, because they have to present all-
I think that's what Anne Marie was saying, was going to be presented next week.
What my saying, I think, is that that is, that's an overwhelming amount of information to process all at once, and that, you know, that's where the balance comes in. It's like, then we have to remember all of our previous presentations, and then, then sort of think about things more globally. I think this presentation was actually really helpful and really great, because I think, I think it presented a rationale for the direction of the department. It's not for us to agree or disagree necessarily. If they, if they have made decisions, and they have a rationale for what they're doing, and we need to trust that that makes sense. And I think everything that was laid out here explained that. I think what he's looking for is, I think he's questioning, how is it going to be possible to have an equally sort of, you know, enriching presentation that presents a sort of rationale for the direction that all the administrators want to take in, in one meeting, and then weigh it as a total budget? And if you can answer that, that would be great.
Well, the, we met with all the administrators about what they're, again, you know, the administrators also would have things that they would like to see, but knowing that we can't actually produce everything. So it's a recommendation going forward. They prioritize what it is that they want to bring forward, and then we try to prioritize it for the board, so that the board can make the decision going forward.
But you, but, you know, a lot of the line items, quite honestly, that, we even said it, you said it, said, why is this number in here? Well, it's been carried over from last year, you know, there's not a detail line by line, so there's no way we're going to be able to identify the funding to fund the language or anything, because we're not in that little detail. It's, it's there, the funding's there, if we want to do it.
The funding, the general fund budget is what pays for most. So there's grants that are available to subsidize, and they're specific in nature. So they help the general fund in certain areas, but the general fund tax levy is what pays for the budget. So there's, you know, unfortunately, we're living in the fourth year of the tax cap. We don't have a lot of latitude like we used to have, where we could just add and subtract. So we have to prioritize what's the most important. So again, special education, we must provide special education services for children. That's, that's a requirement. Is that more, so that's, that needs to be done. So is elementary specials more important than, you know, high school language? You know, at some point, the board will have to determine what they want to do now, what they can do now, what the district wants to do, and then what we're going to do next year, and then the year after that. So it's not, there's no possible way that all of the things that everyone wants would be able to be put into one budget. Fiscally, unless you go over the cap, or unless we got an additional amount of state aid, we couldn't possibly do everything that everyone wants. So we have to turn it, prioritize that.
Well, I'm not going to recommend going over the cap. What I'm saying is that you need to, sometimes the departments need to look and say, how am I going to reduce by 10% in order, or 5% in order to, in order for us to be able to afford this other, this other program, or language, or something that we want, and we need to, that we need, because we're lacking it when you compare us to other schools? How else are we going to do that?
Well, I, I think, I'm thinking the board goals might be important to do next week, because then the board goals will say what it is you exactly want. Because right now, as an administrator, we can bring recommendations to you without knowing what your priorities are. So if your priority is to increase electives at the high school, or see that over a five year period, that would be-
I'm sure you got, I'm sure you got ideas from the, from the school administrators-
Yes.
...of what they would like.
And each, each individual administrator may have their own set of priorities, or what they think is the most important thing.
Right.
And so, again, there's balance in this, because what we know at the end of the day is that what we're allowed to increase the budget by, that lives within the tax cap, is not going to allow for all things to be able to happen in this budget. But each individual person has their own list of priorities of what they think is the most important thing. And so those are the internal conversations that have been happening. But, and again-
Can I ask a logistic question?
...is part of the whole picture. But when we've had discussions, and it doesn't align with maybe what might be one or several ideas, that's where we're having internal discussions of, what is it that students need? How are we creating the priorities around what is important to consider as we look at what those student needs are? And how do we balance it?
So I'm going to ask that we table this and do the regular business of the board, and if we want to bring it up for discussion later on in the meeting, I'm all for it. But I know that the public has been waiting to have comments, because they have concerns that they want to share with us, and that we need to get the consent agenda done and everything else. If we want to bring it up later on, I'm all for it. But we need to let them go for it.
Good. Thank you.
All righty. So we do have, reviewing the agenda, we do have two addendums to the agenda. It will be Resolution 031317A, and then, and that will be 14 for now, one. And we have Resolution 031317B. Who will read the resolutions when it's time to vote on them? So we have, any parent groups? I'm sorry, I skipped one. Any student or school presentations? Getting up, getting down?
We're in the right group.
Okay. Uh, parent group.
Good evening. We're speaking on behalf of Sergeant's PTO tonight, Patty Rinaldi, regarding our concerns about the large class sizes, specifically in grades kindergarten three and four. Sergeant's kindergarten classes average 26.5 students, while the other schools average 20 students. Sergeant's third grade, which includes an inclusion class, averages 25.5 students, while the other schools average 21 students. Sergeant's fourth grade class averages 27.5, while the other schools are at 22.5 students. This past fall, many sergeant parents stood up at the board meetings and wrote emails asking for another section to be added to the kindergarten, when the two classes started off the year with an average of 27 students. The district was aware of these large classes in the summer, but parents were told that class numbers aren't addressed until October 1st each year. October rolled around, and sergeant's parents were told the kids were all settled in, and the teachers didn't want to lose any of their students, so the district's solution was to add a teaching assistant to the two classes. This completely sidestepped the issue that having 27.5 kids in one kindergarten class is unacceptable. The first kindergarten TA was not added until late December, and then the second TA was added in the other classes sometime after that. It was an incredibly slow response to an issue that the kindergarten teachers and Mr. Arjara principal brought to the attention of the central office during the summer. As class size decreases, behavior improves, participation increases, and students pay attention better. But that doesn't happen by adding a TA to an already crowded classroom. As a school district, we need to be ahead of the situation and be proactive, so an issue like this does not arise again next year.
This upcoming school year, Sergeant has the extra classroom space available and an extra teacher on staff to add an additional section to either first, fourth, or fifth grades. However, that means that two grades will suffer with the effects of large numbers. We need the district to approve the hiring of two more teachers. To date, Principal Archer's request for additional staff has been denied for the 2017 to 2018 school year. Sergeant's PTO urges the board to make the class size a budget priority and cap K through second grade classes to 23 students, and cap three to five class, third to fifth grade classes at 24. Furthermore, we urge you to require the date for addressing class size be before the school year begins, and not October 1st.
Also, as you are aware, Sergeant continues to share an art teacher with Forestale. A two-year plan was the answer provided by Mrs. Corderoni to adding an art teacher and an elementary band position. Funds have been allocated for this position, as stated by Mrs. Corderoni at the April 11th, 2016 board meeting. Scheduling issues were rationale supporting two-year plan stated by Mrs. Corderoni and Mrs. Donceau Rumsley. We expect that this will be the likely excuse raised once more to ensure hiring of this role. They claim they are making art and music education uniform, consistent, and standard throughout the district. We ask, is it? The claim was made that the hiring of an art teacher for each elementary school may not be warranted, because Mrs. Corderoni does not, does not know if they will be fully subscribed. Can she support and explain if and what that means?
Thank you.
I, that's part of the presentation.
Okay. All right. Any other parent groups? I would say, we did receive your emails. If you didn't get a response back, say, and we received it, we did receive emails that were sent, and we do hear your concerns. It's something that we are looking at, especially if we're looking at board goals, that's something that would be an appropriate board goal to say, let's keep class sizes lower. So that's something that we could talk about when we do a vote as well. Any other parent groups? All right. Open to the public with Terry.
Terry, it's now four minutes. It needs to be three downs for you.
It won't be that long, and I think we covered a lot of what I had to say. I just want to, you know, address, get some clarification on what the policy is with increased class sizes. Strongly believe that it would have a, would do a great disservice to our students, and it can have a adverse effect on our students. And I'm speaking from personal experience, because from kindergartens, my senior year in high school, I never was in a classroom with less than 30 students. I was all, I was often with other students who were written off and labeled as unteachable and not smart. And I'm looking back as an adult, and seeing, you know, seeing it through adult eyes, that those kids weren't unredeemable, but they fell through the cracks. And I would hate to see something like that happen here in the Beacon City School District. I understand you have a lot of challenges ahead of you, but you also have a golden opportunity to be proactive. And I would beg you and urge you, please cap the class size at 23 if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if we have a policy on class sizes, but that's something that we could look at at the policy committee meeting, to see if there is a policy, or to see what it exactly states. So. Julie?
Can you put that down as a little investigation?
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to talk yet again about equity amongst the elementary schools. Common topic. I'd first like to say thank you for hiring a new library media teacher at JVF this current school year. It's made a tremendous difference, and the media instruction has increased. Also, my daughter reports that it's much better now, because they are actually having computer class. I would, however, like to remind everyone of some things that were stated last year. On February 8th, 2016, Anne Marie stated at the Board of Ed meeting that they are looking at equity across the board for the elementary schools as a priority. Then, in last year's budget presentation on April 11th, Anne Marie stated that hiring another art teacher and band teacher was part of the two-year plan. She said that the goal was to make it uniform across all four elementary schools. Now I'm back again to find out what the school district plans to do to ensure that this two-year plan is met, and that the four schools are more equitable. My other concern that I bring to you tonight is class sizes at JVF. My daughter has been lucky to have the same wonderful teacher for the past two years. This year, she has 25 students in her class, and a few who make it seem more like it is 30 kids due to the behavior issues. The school is helped by providing some extra help, on and off throughout the day, to assist the teacher with makeup tests, photocopying, and other tasks that are difficult to complete when you have such a large class of students. However, with already 25 students in the class, what will happen next year if more students move into JVF's zone? There are lots of new apartments currently being built in close proximity to the school. What if a lot of new families move in? At what point does the district decide to open up another section of a grade level? Are there any plans for redistricting? I'm well aware that this concern is not isolated to JVF, it is a district-wide elementary concern. How can my daughter get the education she deserves if the teacher has to stop multiple times throughout the day to deal with behavior issues related to large class size? If there are not enough elementary classrooms in the current four schools to provide the education that these students deserve, what is the district planning to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brayden Smith. I'm the parent of two future JV Forestale kids, just registered today, so that's kind of exciting. I'm actually here to discuss the, the, possibly the hiring, the future hiring of a new athletic director and physical education director. I noticed on OLS the other day that there is a job posting for the athletic director that's listed, and it's great that the district's moving forward so quickly on getting a new hire in place. I believe Mr. Nemeczek is scheduled to retire on July 1st. I noticed that the deadline for applications in OLS was in March 24th, which is a very short period of time. With all the discussions that the board has had about hiring policy would in place, and hopefully about parents being involved in the hiring of upper-level district administration, I was curious, I had several questions about the status of that search. One of the questions is, has the new hiring procedures been put in place for this particular search? The other question is, are any parents involved in the search? Will there be any parents involved in the search? And then finally, has the board been involved in the search? Have any of the, has any information been presented about the goals for athletic director, or what the district is looking for in an athletic director to the board in any, in any way, shape, or form? I say, and I ask these questions principally because the athletic director's position, although it may look relatively distinct from the curricular issues that often come before the board, have a lot of overlap on some important stuff that's happening in Beacon. In particular, the recreation center has been reaching out to the school district to set up the after-school programs. It's been working very closely to try to develop a coordinated effort to increase both what the, the school district can offer, and also what the RECH Center wants to offer. And the city council's on board and supports it. So this is a perfect opportunity to bring community members into the hiring of an athletic director, bring the RECH Center into hiring of an athletic director, have a voice in the committee, have someone who knows, you know, many of the programs that are already being offered and has a goal and a vision for the future, have their voice on that committee. They also, I believe both have parents in the district, they are also parents of children that attend Beacon schools. In addition, there should just be a parent representative. There, there should be a parent representative for a position that's so important to the district, and that affects so many students. And athletics is an important part of the school district. So I would hope you consider those questions, and I'm hoping that the answers are that they're there, but I haven't heard about them. So if, whatever guidance you can provide tonight, that would be great. Thank you.
We have not, since the posting is still-
We have not, since the posting is still not closed, we have not put together the committee. So, I don't have details as exactly who's going to be on it. It would probably be at the next board meeting I would have more details as to how the committee would be set up. We have another week and a half until that happens.
Who will be a parent on the committee? Aaron?
Hello. Lady marriage, Rebecca. I'm here as a future parent of a first grader at Sargent Elementary School as of September 2017. My six-year-old daughter currently attends kindergarten at Hudson Hills, La Sore, here in Beacon. Her class size is about fifteen kids, a mixed age group between three and six-year-olds. So, she's coming from a nice, really magical, small class size. As a parent to, as a new parent to the Beacon City School District, I wanted to share my experience and questions with you regarding the registration process. I was thinking that there was a deadline to register her for first grade, like there is a deadline for kindergarten, so I called the registrar's office today to make an appointment to drop off the paperwork. I was told that the registration for first grade students doesn't begin until my daughter would graduate kindergarten in June. This comes as a surprise to me for a few reasons, and I wanted to direct my questions to you rather than to the registrar. Why wait until June 2017 or later to accept new students into the system for the 2017, 2018 school year? Is this a New York state law, or is this determined internally by the Beacon City School District or the employees? Many school districts accept new registrations in the fall and early winter of 2016 for C assignments in the 2017, 2018 year. What's the reason Beacon doesn't accept registrations throughout the year for new students? Wouldn't it be prudent to start registering new students as early as possible or on a rolling basis so that class sizes can be followed and predicted? If the principal and administration do not find out about class size until late summer or later due to new students being enrolled as late as July or August, how can they adequately prepare their teachers or hire a new teacher or aide to handle large class sizes? What is the maximum number of kids allowed in a classroom anyway? If the busing request deadline is April 1st or before, as we heard in the presentation from the transportation director recently, why is there no corresponding deadline for school registration, especially if new students to the district need busing to daycare before or after school? Many people buy a home or rent a place to live based on the school their child would attend. I moved to Beacon in 2008 and found a great house right across the street from a great school. I've heard from parents whose kids were maxed out at their zone school and had to attend a different school within the city. Are all children able to attend the school they are zoned for? Whose decision is it to determine whether or not a child will enter the school they are zoned for or possibly have to go to a differently zoned school? Sorry. Due to the classroom size being at a maximum, what is the criteria to determine if a child needs to attend a school that they're not zoned for? What is the timeline for this? If a child has to go to a different school than the one he or she is zoned for, how early would a parent know about this? I hope that if a child isn't going to be able to attend the school they are zoned for or have to be bused unexpectedly to a different school, parents are given adequate time to prepare themselves and their child for this change and possibly make the decision to change their minds about moving ahead with the school that they might be newly assigned to. If there are many registration applicants for limited spots in a school, how is it determined which students attend one school or another? Given all of these questions from a new school parent, which I didn't want to put in the registrar with this afternoon, I wanted to present them to you, the board, and to the interim superintendent and the future superintendent to get clarification on the district policy. Would you be able to advise me on when and I and other parents can expect answers to some of these questions? I thank you for your time and your dedication to the kids at Beacon.
Thank you. Do you have those two now? Perfect.
Yeah.
Do you have your contact information on there?
Yes.
That was not my understanding that registration for non-kindergarten parents had to wait until June, so I will address that. I'm not saying you didn't. I'll address it.
Thank you.
Franklin?
Good evening. Rebecca Carolla, parent, taxpayer. I'm sorry again, these boards, these board meetings slipped on me, and I always intend to send an email out prior to coming up, but I never seem to be able to do it. But you know that when you see me, you're going to hear me talk about music again, and I'm going to underscore some of the things that I've already been said in terms of equity across the elementary. It is a big concern of mine and of many others as well. At the last board meeting or two ago, I had inquired about this also, and I'm really appreciative to hear it being spoken about tonight, very appreciative that this is being looked at. Specifically, when it comes to music, I am concerned about the equity, as I said, in contact time for the students at the elementary. And it is my understanding, just, you know, inquiring around about schedules and asking, talking to other parents, it is my understanding, correct me if this is inaccurate, but at Sargent Elementary School, students in K through five are receiving music class, general music class, two times in the six-day rotation. Students at JV Forstal and Glenham, by contrast, are receiving that same general music class one time per six-day rotation. Again, that's what I understand. And at South Avenue, if you are a child in kindergarten, third grade, or fourth grade in South Avenue, you are receiving general music two times in the six-day rotation as opposed to if you were a first grader, second grader, or fifth grader at South Avenue, you are receiving general music one time in the six-day rotation. So, this is not counting band, it's not counting pre-K, but I'm just talking about general music. So, I would really like to see this addressed because students are clearly at a disadvantage when they are not receiving the optimum amount of music instruction. My other just question on the end of that is that since the general music teacher is currently teaching the band in each school, in each neighborhood school, and since those general music classes are different in terms of their frequency and number, I'm wondering if the teacher load of the general music teacher in each building affects their availability to offer band instruction in that building and therefore would affect the lesson group sizes, which would directly affect the quality of instruction that those children receive in band specifically, which leads into the need for what I've been saying for a while, what I'm so happy to hear us looking at again, is the elementary, the dedicated elementary band teacher throughout the elementary, which would certainly optimize instrumental instruction at the elementary rather than putting it on the general music teachers who have different teaching loads. So, those were the details that I wanted to kind of put out there as you are continuing to consider this issue. Thank you so much for talking about it. Thank you for making it a priority, and I really hope to hear a real commitment on this very soon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Debbie Brennan. I have two kids, and one in second grade, one in the middle school. I have written to you all before, back to beat the drum again, about PE. Emailed to you all earlier this afternoon. As I've mentioned, we've talked about, as we mentioned already, we're not meeting the New York State Education Mandate of elementary PE, although there is one exception from what I can tell as a result of pushing for it last fall. By the way, the requirement is 120 minutes per week, calendar move, not six-day cycle. We're stuck in this six-day cycle thing, which kind of changes things up. Last fall, as a result of some pushing, at Sargent, Mr. Archer added some extra classes of PE, and the fifth grade is currently receiving the mandated 120 minutes, or at least three per week, per cycle. So, that's progress, but that's just one grade in all of our districts, all of our schools. This is a mandate. It's already decreed that we shouldn't be doing it, and soon the teeth of the mandate will get a little tougher. I mentioned last June, two bills passed in the New York State House and Senate requiring that if districts did not meet the mandate, they would have to report, as I said, they would have to come up with a compliance plan, a remediation plan if they weren't in compliance. And it also removed the loophole, and I call it loophole because schools often make up the difference, as has been our plan, somewhat of a plan, by having classroom teachers supervised by a PE teacher, have movement breaks or put up yoga, you guys on the smartboard and things like that. It's not the same as physical education. It adds movements of the day, and any classroom teacher worth their salt will do that anyway, but it's not PE, it's not physical education. Physical education, a quality program includes health, includes nutrition, includes much more than a classroom teacher putting on something on the smartboard for ten minutes just to get the wiggles out in the afternoon. So, that's valuable, definitely valuable, but we can do better. Why should we continue to plod along the same, the same way when we can do better? All the research has shown that increased activity levels yield increased academic performance. We can change this, but the time to do that is now when we're gathering all this information, when we can plan for staffing, plan for administrators to take a long, hard look at scheduling, and come up with a plan to change it. Three times per six-day cycle would be a step in the right direction. If the district is going to stay at the six-day cycle, then going from two times per cycle to three would be a step in a regular five-day week. They would be in compliance one week, and then out of compliance the next, but it's progress. Currently, right now, my daughter, for a couple of years in a row, has PE days one and three, so her classmates frequently, frequently have PE once a week, just once a week because that's the way the days fall. And once a week, forty-five minutes is nowhere near the 120 minutes that our kids are supposed to be getting. Now, doing this does not have to come at the expense of art or music. We can add it, okay? You can add the PE and still keep and maintain equity of art and music throughout the elementary schools. It doesn't have to come at the expense of that. There's a saying, a popular bulletin board, "Growing minds and hearts through PE and the arts." We can put it all together. It doesn't have to be at the expense of one or the other. So, I urge you now, all the time, this is the time for budget planning, for scheduling, to make a change.
Change.
To make a change and make a move for the better.
Just a second, Mike.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kate Burksmith. I haven't had a chance to meet most of you. This is my first Board of Ed meeting, and I just want to start by saying thank you for all that you all have been doing for our schools and our kids. It is definitely appreciated. Anthony was kind enough to let me know that my email was already received by all of y'all, so I'm not going to reread it to you, but I do just want to kind of talk about a couple of points. And I'm a parent of a kindergartner at South Avenue Elementary, and I'm concerned about the possibility of the increased class sizes for first grade. So, right now, there are three first-grade teachers. One of those teachers is retiring, and I want to make sure that we keep it at three classes. We have at least fifty-five, by my count, kindergartners that would be going into first grade. That's not including some of the families from Hudson Hills, like Erin Junta's family at Sargent, some of the homeschool families in the area that I know are coming. And of course, people are always moving to Beacon, and other parents discuss the housing boom and the parents coming in. There are developments in South Avenue area already. So, when I discussed this with Principal Hay Hill, she said, oh, hi, Mike, she said that it was going to be all about enrollment. And since it seems like we're already pushing almost sixty going into the first grade, I can't understand why enrollment is even something we're questioning for this. If we have it cut down to two classes with almost sixty kids, we're looking at almost thirty kids a class. We all know that's not what we want. We all know we want to have, you know, people are pushing for twenty-three, but the contract with the teachers has an average of twenty-five. As a parent and as an educator, I can also personally speak to what a difference having a manageable class size is. It makes, you know all the research behind, I sent you guys articles, but I can send you more, behind what a difference it makes on the students. It also makes a big difference on the teachers that we're hiring. It helps them do their job effectively as well. So, we can work effectively, the teachers can work effectively. It is a solid win, and it's something we already have because we already have those three classes. So, we know we have the space for it. I'm just asking that we maintain what we've already got instead of slipping backwards. Oh, I want to read you a quote which Sherri sent you. No, okay. This was in, no, that's your contract, sorry. The National Education Policy Center's report called "Does Class Size Matter?" I mean, it just simply sums up, you pages and pages and pages of research. Class size matters. Research supports the common sense notion that children learn more and teachers are more effective in smart classes. We all know it, we have the research to back it. This should be our main and biggest priority, especially when we're looking at how funds are allocated in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all that's lined up. Anybody else?
Nicole Meyer had to leave. I was going to read her statement. Is that appropriate?
Just come to the mic.
Clock already started.
You can give her credit if you're reading it, Lori. Present yourself as Lori, and then you can give her credit at the end.
I'm Nicole Meyer. Okay. It's, you know, it's first person, so it's a little weird, but just imagine I'm Nicole. Okay, dear members of the Board of Ed, I'm here tonight with a request to enact a district-wide policy to consistently adjust class sizes in all of the elementary schools. Currently, a parent of two children in Sargent School, and both have been negatively impacted by large class sizes. Although I've been vocal regarding this issue, I do not feel my concerns here have been addressed in a reasonable amount of time or in a way that benefits our children in the best possible manner. In the summer of 2016, I became aware of the class sizes for the incoming kindergarten with enrollment of twenty-eight and twenty-nine children in the class at Sargent. Having knowledge of the current Board of Ed policy, which states, "The Board of Education agrees to give budget priority to the recruitment of additional teachers to reduce district class size averages by building and grades wherever such averages exceed twenty-five."
What number is that?
I don't know. I don't have the policy number. Sorry. Blame Nicole. I was under the impression the issue would be addressed later in the summer. I reached out to the school and understood Mr. Archer and the K teachers had requested an additional section be added. I felt confident our principal and teachers were strongly advocating for the children and was shocked when I learned in August that class sizes had not been reduced. At that point, parents mobilized, writing letters to the district office and requesting an additional section. School began, some parents chose to move their children to private school, leaving the numbers at twenty-seven children per classroom. Mr. Wright and Ms. Rumley conducted a school visit and asked the teachers if they wanted to divide their classes into three. At that point in time, after the children had already been in school, the teachers understandably did not want to divide. An additional certified teacher was requested to co-teach with the current K team in an attempt to increase teacher contact time and differentiated instruction, but an additional teacher was not hired. In the fall, I spoke at a Board of Ed meeting requesting an additional teacher and was told two teaching assistants had been approved, and Mr. Archer was in the process of hiring. Several weeks later, assistants had yet to enter the K classrooms. It was not until mid-December when both K classes had the support. This is completely unacceptable. How can the teachers, principal, and parents all advocate for this issue to be addressed in the summer of 2016 and additional adults not be placed in the classrooms until December 2nd? If a united plea for relief is not heard by the district office, then my request to you, the Board of Ed, is to instate a district-wide policy defining the number of students per grade level and by a date prior to the start of school. That makes it all the more pertinent. As a kindergarten teacher of over fifteen years, Nicole, I know class sizes of the utmost importance. I know and study support smaller class sizes decrease student distractions, increase the amount of time students are actively engaged, and increase the likelihood of interactive and hands-on learning. Students have also shown, studies, I'm sorry, have also shown smaller classes are increasingly important in schools of high-need areas such as our own. Sargent currently holds lap status. I don't think anyone has mentioned that tonight, but that's important to note. It's therefore high-need, yet class sizes have still not been addressed. My experience with the lack of attention to class sizes is one example, but there are many more, not only in Sargent but across all of the elementary schools. Please, for the sake of all of our children in the district, implement a district-wide policy. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to reading an updated policy with more appropriate class limits. Thank you from Nicole and myself. By the way, someone just handed me this. By the way, someone just handed me this. It's from Article VII, Section A of the current contract between BCSD and the Beacon Teachers Association.
All right, thanks. That's the teacher contract and the board policy. Thank you. We knew that it was a contract. Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me to speak. My name is Lisa Marie Martinez. I came late. I was unable to sign up to speak because I was at the city council meeting. This is something I've spoken to at least Anne Ray about, also Mary Vasal. To go along with what some of the other parents are saying, back, I think it was four months ago, the issue of zoning lots came up time, like, for a long time at the city council meetings, which was going to affect how many units were able to be built at certain housing projects that they were working on, which was going to affect potentially how many new students would be coming into the South Avenue, Rumbaugh, and High School. But I'm most concerned about South Avenue. That's where my child's a student right now. And so, I'd like to know, and I brought the issue up to council people and also to the mayor, like I said, why we're having these meetings on the same night at the same time. I'm exhausted, I'm a single parent. These women work tirelessly. This is only my second end pen, but majority of women behind me today. Like I said, I'm a single parent, I'm a business owner, I'm a teacher in the community. It's really hard to make all these different meetings if you want to be part of the PTA, PTO, any other type of civic lady-minded organizations. So, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there and ask, I know this is the way it's always been done. That's the answer I've gotten from the people I've spoken to, this is the way it's done. But there are things that are happening at the city council, always, there's time for public comment, there's time to hear live what's going on in the room at the workshops, and there are things that are going on here that need to be spoken about by the same people that are in this room, that are in that room. And that's going to be my platform for a while, and I'm going to try to continue to come back here and ask that this not happen anymore. I don't know how we can make that change, but there's a lot of people, I think, that would make more effort, to be more involved, to know what's going on in their school, at the school level and also the district level, if we had the opportunity to make both meetings, because there's a disconnect between the two groups, I feel, and that's inappropriate. And that's all. So, is there a timeframe? When I could get an answer for that maybe? I heard other people say that, and that seems like an effective way of communicating, make a timeline for those types of answers.
Sure. So, are you done with your statement?
Yeah, that's my statement.
Because we don't do a Q and A, so I could...
Oh, we don't do a conversation. Okay.
Right. So, I can tell you that at a previous board meeting, we did talk about how we could, what day of the week we should have a board meeting, because we want to be able to go to back-and-forth of both, and we want the community members to. So that was a conversation that we started, and we may continue to have, so.
Right.
And we'll talk to the city to see if they're willing to adjust as well, so.
Yeah, what did the city council say? I'm interested in that.
Thank you.
I guess we could have asked the city council, but I will tell you what both the mayor and Anne Ray said, this is the way it's always been done, so they would take into consideration.
Right. So we'll continue to work with them to see if we can accommodate one way or the other.
There are some serious decisions being made right now at our city council that affect all of our children, so I would urge probably to follow what's going on right now at the city council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? John once, twice. All right. Anne Ray, your report.
Thank you. I really have just one comment, well, actually two. So, I hear everyone's comments. We have been working extremely hard, especially today in music, that just so happens that you mentioned that as well, but we had a very lengthy conversation about equity. And you're, you know, you're correct. Without looking at your numbers, the elementary schools offer different things for different grades, and it's kind of all over the place. So, that is definitely a goal of the administration, to make sure that we give a program that's equitable across the district. And I'll have more information at the next board meeting, once we finalize, and I can come up with the staffing requirements. Again, the other, the other comment I want to make, I'm sure some of you received it via email or on the phone, that we are having a snow day tomorrow. I think everyone is having a snow day tomorrow. I'm hoping that we don't get as much snow as they say, so we can open on Wednesday, but stay tuned about that, and I just want everyone to be safe, and we will see you on Wednesday or Thursday. Thank you.
All righty. I hope we get some snow, so it wasn't like a cancellation.
I know. Friday, yes.
Isn't that, that would be another complaint.
Yes, we missed that vote there, so I think, I think you're going to get your wish.
All right. All right, committee reports, board comments. Craig, one second.
Sure. I'm very happy that Mr. Rukaski raised the point that he did tonight about the need to spend more time looking at the instructional budget and see what our options may be. I like the idea of spending more time examining that than may have been contemplated in the scheduling. I realize that we have limits on next Monday's meeting, but what about looking at some additional time when we could do that? I'd like everybody to think about that. I don't feel that I'm prepared to just rubber stamp any kind of a proposal that comes along. I would bet that there's others on this board that feel the same way, that this is very important. We've heard from the community on a number of issues tonight, and not for the first time, and I don't believe we can just skate past it. Class size, I think there's something interesting going on. We've seen this before, where there are demographic surges and demographic declines. There was the baby boom, there was the baby boom-let. Are we now ready for the baby boom-let-let? The echo, but we're still fighting World War II. I mean, really, the impact of the baby boom is not done yet, and I think we need to study this. I don't know exactly how we go about this, the censuses and so on, but maybe we need to reach out for some additional information, because this isn't the first time we've heard about some class size things. You know, developers come into this district, particularly in the town of Fish Hill, but even in the city of Beacon, which people would have told you was fully developed. No, it wasn't. If there's a spare piece of land, developers will find it, and they will come up with a proposal. And once they've done that, they'll keep doing it and finding places you didn't even know existed. And they always come in and say, "Oh, we're going to build four-bedroom homes, but there's only going to be 1.2 children." And that might be the case for their demographic research, and it might be baloney, but over time, what happens is 1.2 becomes 2.4, and big houses attract bigger families, either because they grow or because there's new people that move in. So, if you look at the kind of attractiveness that the city has had, and then you start to look at the goals we have of making this a district that people want to move into, not out of, isn't it logical to assume that we're going to get more people, getting more kids? I heard a comment tonight about people who were doing homeschooling considering moving into the district. I don't know, somebody checking that. What about people who are in private schools? Are they attracted to this district now? Are they looking at it? And then again, there may be economic reasons why that could be happening. How are we studying this? I think the administration probably has some information on this. If we can get some more, I would like to hear it, because if something is sneaking up on us, it could cause worse problems than what we're seeing now. Turning to that subject of how much money we have to play with, we put the pieces together as we go through. Several of us did our bit a week ago, marching in Kingston. By the way, there was at least a dozen people from Beacon who did this march with the Alliance for Quality Education. A very cold day, but we did it anyway. We saw Mrs. Gaston, Mrs. Hewer, Mr. Sagan, and myself, and a number of other people, some of whom might be in the room, marching and complaining and advocating for proper funding of the schools. Then we hear the governor say, "Well, some people just never seem to have enough." I'm not going to get into it, but let's talk a little bit about what else we can do. The budget at the state level is not yet done. I've seen some state legislation that concerns me and that concerns the New York State School Boards Association. It looks very innocuous on the surface, where, you know, tax credits would be given to people who make contributions to programs that are supposed to improve education. Well, I checked into that. It turns out, this is a way that fat cats can get hundreds of thousands of dollars in donations, tax credits, which are a dollar for dollar, not a deduction, but a credit, which is knocked right off your taxes if they're donating to one of these programs that's supposed to be created by this legislation. Well, the impact on us is that this is state money that goes away, because it becomes a tax credit, and I'm just a little suspicious that it might be part of a plan to just take it away from school districts like ours. So, we're the ones that do the heavy lifting. We take all comers, as you heard, and what we probably need to do is consider opposing this legislation. I'll try to bring something back at the next meeting with further details. On the positive side, our music in the schools programs in the past week had very large audiences, especially the choral program, which was strictly standing room only. Very interesting performances, I enjoyed them both, and if you think there's not interest in a school music program, you should have been there this past week, Thursday. You couldn't find a parking space in either Beacon High or Rumbaugh. I mean, it was just maxed out, so we're doing some things very well. Thank you.
Kristen?
So, the wellness committee, we had our family, elementary family fitness night, two Fridays ago.
March, Thursday.
Thank you.
As we know, D E C seems to be my weakness. It was incredible, and it was really well-attended. We had a lot of great exhibitors. The committee did such a great job organizing all different partners from the community, and also the phys ed staff did a great job. And really, to sort of underscore a public comment, the thing that was really interesting about it was that it combined all aspects of wellness. So I think last year, a lot of the activity was focused on the kind of obstacle course and physical presentations, like the zumba instructor and in the gym, but this year, they had moved a lot of the exhibitors to the cafeteria, where they had people from Common Ground Farm, from the Boy Scouts.
Do you have, off the top of your head, remember some of the other presenters?
I can send...
What's that, Green Team?
Yeah, it was, and, and, but a lot of the people stayed in the cafeteria with the exhibitors, learning about quality food, about different aspects of wellness, which really underscores something that Debbie said, which is that physical education is more all-encompassing. I'd like to just put a plug in for the wellness committee to have some role in the athletic director. This, I think we knew was being posted, but it is, it is interesting to think of framing this as, you know, that's somebody who's going to be connected with the nurses, with the, with the phys ed teachers, with the dining staff, so, which are all points that the wellness committee touches on. So it would be really good to have some input there. Karen Pagano, I want to just give a really quick shout-out to her, because I, I feel like I just want to hang around Karen Pagano all day and have her organize my entire life, because she is very, very on point. I always love how she sends everything out ahead of time and is really focused and gets things done, and the family fitness site, I think, really reflected that. In terms of class size, I just want to say that that seems like something that we can talk about as a broader priority, at least in the early grades, and I think it would be interesting to have that as something that we examine just from a planning perspective, which is, I think, I think one of the bigger things that we have going on here is that we've had a lot of change all at once. The board has, in these presentations, I think, expected more detail than maybe has been custom. That's something that really has to, we have to give a lot of credit to the people who've gotten up and given these presentations, because we've put them in the hot seat a lot more. But I hope that it's understood, that it's being done in the spirit of having a really detailed discussion regarding something that, in the end, we hope will benefit students. So I know we were talking about priorities and class size being one of them, what are fixed things that we could think about putting in the budget, where we can examine that we have some room, but also, I would like to put out there that I think we should really examine local partners and creative options. It was really interesting to hear about that transition coordinator, because that's somebody who, in a way, will provide some real-life connections to some really, there's a lot of great entrepreneurial businesses happening in Beacon, there's a lot of interesting organizations locally, so it, I think that those aren't, those aren't high costs, and sometimes they come with their own funding. And we should make sure that we connect with the community and let them know that the door is open to those type of opportunities, because we are working within a tax cap, and we are, we do have a lot of students that we're serving that are expensive, and rightfully so, they should get the education they deserve. And then finally, there are, I think Craig touched on this, but there are two separate, we have a local politician, Sue Sorino, she's supporting a bill that, that is saying that she supports the funding of foundation aid. The thing about that is, that would be a nice gesture, and while the gesture is important, it also has zero teeth in actually funding schools. So if you really want to, if you're really interested in seeing schools get the funding they deserve, the focus is on the budget, and what is included in the budget. And if the foundation aid is not included in the budget, then that, that's not putting your money where your mouth is. So, I think that if you feel interested in making sure that all students get the education they deserve, and Beacon gets the funding it deserves, feel free to reach out to Sue, because that vote is coming up soon.
Next, wellness meeting.
It's the first Thursday I've ever been in, so.
First Thursday?
Yes.
That's the sixth. Anthony?
All right. The, I think the Senate bill that Kristen was referring to is Senate Bill 2280.
2280, yeah.
Yeah. And I actually asked Nisbet to look at it as well, and it came to the same conclusion that, you know, it doesn't matter what the calculations mean, what matters is if they don't fully fund the formulas to begin with, what are we actually going to get?
It's a clever count.
Yeah. The, I had a question. Did we get a response back from the PTO collaborative about the candidate tonight?
I thought we asked them here at the board table, and they said they would do it. So I haven't, I haven't reached out to anyone, we don't have petitions, and so...
Well, I mean, we can schedule the date regardless petition, that would make us more neutral.
That's what the board wants us to do, I, I don't know, is that what?
That's, Anthony's bringing it up, but we need to make a motion.
All right, make a motion, we have a meeting candidates tonight for the upcoming election.
Second. Comments, questions? Comments, questions?
I just, I do remember, I'm not trying to put the PTO collaborative off the spot or anything, I just remember somebody saying, "Okay, maybe we'll do it." Is that something that we're supposed to, we can't organize it as a, right, we can't as a board?
That was the whole thing, is that the PTO collaboratives did it because they weren't us.
Right.
Are we able to act on this right now?
Right.
We're in comments, I mean, we're in committee comments, so if we...
He made a motion.
Don't make a motion.
Let's not point fingers.
We're not even on part of the agenda yet to make a motion, so I would say...
Yeah, that's where, that's where we are.
I mean, are they going?
Let's hold on, fine.
Okay.
Make a motion later on.
Sure, fine. I mean, I will say that the, the Olympic Central Schools District, they provide a lot of support to the PTSA Council. They let them advertise on their internet, on their website, send out flyers, all that stuff, so, you know, last year, there was an issue with flyers and maintain anonymity, and I'd like to try to resolve all those issues before, as last-minute decisions that are made that are maybe incorrect. I am happy to know that the career fair is coming back to the high school. I know they're still working on it, it should be somewhat towards the end of May. The Southern Duchess and the LACP... to the high school. I know they're still working on it. It should be somewhat towards the end of May. The, the Southern Duchess and the LACP is also contacting the guidance office at the high school. Talk about setting up the tuition assistance award to graduating senior, so I hope that works out. On Thursday, March 16th, at Pecossee, there's a school to prison pipeline presentation. So I'm intending to go so they can explain what your rights are. I, I do have a request. I guess if we're having a board meeting on the 20th before the diversity committee meeting, can I move my diversity committee meeting to this room? So that I don't have to go back down.
Yeah, we were advertising it for here so that we don't have to go back and forth.
Okay. All right. And that's all comments I have right now. Oh, and I'm sorry, the technology committee. I got word from Tim Fashin that unfortunately I had to restart the process again a little bit because there was a comment from the state and they were sending stuff through snail mail. But I guess he's, the public notice is eminent this week, right?
We're waiting for a call back from the architect. We need architect's license number to actually put the project on. So we're emailing him and trying to get that on. If we get it over the snow day, we'll, we'll upload it from home. So that's all we're waiting for.
All right, thank you.
What's the next meeting?
Tim has a good idea.
They meet every other month, right? That's what I'm thinking about that.
I'm, I only went to two meetings. So I don't know what their system is.
And diversity is Monday to 12th. 7:30.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
I'll start off with board comments. First, I was talking about the hiring procedure that was developed. I'm requesting a copy of it because we never, unless I missed it, I don't think we ever got.
It was in the attachments of the last board, board docs, board meeting?
From last, last board meeting?
Oh, or in the board event updates, yeah.
So what's the?
Would you ask what?
I'm asking for the hiring, the hiring process.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you found it in the, because I, I haven't seen it.
Which, which date is it? So I can go back and look at it.
The last.
I thought I saw it too. I don't know why.
It's in, it's on board docs.
All right.
I'll find, I'll find the date for it.
Thank you.
One of the two February meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to review that. The question on the PE requirements, talk, this is a mandate. Is it, I think the last, I thought the last time we talked that it wasn't approved. It wasn't really a law. It was recommended. Is it, so is it now absolutely required?
So what man, seriously? As I know it. So there's regulation that speaks to 120 minutes of instruction at the elementary level in physical education. There is, as Ms. Brennan has, has mentioned tonight and previously, some legislative language in, in our state assembly and house that speaks to kind of increasing the leverage of the need to comply with those regulations, if you will, and what might be restrictions on that. I can also share with you that it is something that is not just a struggle here, but in many districts in Duchess County. Actually, there is only one district that would self-report that they are, believe they're in compliance and the others are all like us, trying to move towards, towards compliance and have done that through a variety of, of means.
I mean, does it delineate that after that day, if you don't meet them, the consequence, right?
Well, that's, that's what's, that's what's proposed in the legislation that hasn't been acted on. The regulation itself is in, is in policy language at the, in terms of Part 100 requirements. But in terms of sanctions, actions, or consequences related to it, that's, that's what's language in discussion.
So it's, it's a requirement, but there's no clear.
There's regulations.
There are regulations. There are not specific actions that will happen, you know, to us in coming down. You know, physical education audits are not on the, on the state's radar of accountability measures, but it doesn't mean that it wouldn't be. And ultimately, for us, our goal is to be in compliance with all of the Part 100 regulations.
So do we know what would be impacted? You know, because obviously, there's only a certain number of minutes in a day, in a week. So do we have an idea or is there a study about what, what will be impacted by implementing this?
So part of the conversation about the specials today was a, so for me, I'm not as familiar with the staffing of the elementary, what a typical elementary student's day looks like and what they do. And I'd be more than happy to share that out with the board. I just didn't have it out in an email. But for me, it was very telling because there's blocks of time for ELA and math and alternate days of social studies and science and their special and their lunch and their recess. So when you, when you count out the minutes, there's really not, you know, there's not, there's not a lot of extra minutes there. So that's, that's really what we're worried about. You know, the specials, right now, the way it works is they have a special, one special a day. So once you start adding specials, we don't want to add one and decrease another. We're trying to figure out the best way to do that. So that's a struggle.
Well, what's our concern?
Because we have ELA blocks, we have math, we have, you know, we have core instruction. So that's where the struggle is.
So the state and their regulation and their wisdom must, must have an explanation for how to, how to handle it.
They don't, they don't tell us how to.
It's an actual one state.
Can I ask a question as it fits with this? Like for board goals? Because I feel like we always get into this like circular discussion of like, it's, it's sort of, these guys look at it from a very clear lens of like, well, we are trying to do what we are required to do and try and fit it into these pieces. But I feel like, you know, for board goals, can we reframe the discussion to what's impacted in terms of students by sitting for long periods of time? What's, what are the impacts of obesity? What are the impacts of, you know, behavioral problems that might not even exist if kids moved around more? I think, is that like, when we have the board goals discussion, can we think about it in those terms? Is that how we can bring it forward?
I'm fine with any discussion that happens. That would help develop some goals.
Your next comment. Will, or will the instruction and curriculum presentation will include the scenario of the impact of, considering class size? And if we're going to, if we were to say we want to get to a particular class size, that's going to mean, mean X teachers, X, and, and this is what it would mean to the budget. Is that, will that be first presented to us?
If the board puts a class size max of X, whatever that is, then the impact of hiring would be so many FTEs of teachers to cover that. We will, we will do that.
So would, would we know that, I guess, next meeting or before we vote on the budget?
Yes.
As far as the, the good thing, I think with increasing popularity of the, of the city and a lot of houses selling and selling at higher prices, do we, do we project that the actual, our tax base will increase?
The tax base, the, the tax base in the city of Beacon had increased last year. So I'm anticipating, part of some of the comments also had to do with the city of Beacon. And I have had conversations with the city administrator of when things, properties will come onto the tax roll. So there will be some properties on the tax roll in the summer when we're actually, when we're putting the levy out. It may not impact kids in the district this year. So it will be great because we'll get addition. So people in the city of Beacon may see, you know, an even or decrease in the assessments.
When I was questioning, so even if we say we, we increase the levy to the tax cap, I mean, people's actual taxes they pay could go down.
Could go down, but it wouldn't be all of the municipalities. So be in the, and then that's part of the presentation that I do for the hearing. So I will say this is city of Beacon people, this is what their taxes will be. Wappingers and Fishkill might be a little different because their, their assessment, some of them are coming off the tax roll.
Right, it's just an interesting concept. I wanted to just clarify.
So the levy remains the levy. So that's what happens. It's stagnant. And then how, how much people pay is how it matters based on the assessment.
Then speaking of, speaking of money. So on the facilities and operations committee, we had a meeting on March 6th and the next one is April 5th, 7:30. But so again, like I've spoken in the past couple of meetings, what we're doing is we're putting together, we call it a capital project, but it's basically a group of projects that we want to implement in the, in the district. And these, we're putting a plan together now for starting work in the summer of 2019. Okay, so it's, you know, just to give a perspective, that's 2019. The next project after that will be like 2023. Okay, so these are for major improvements in the district. So the list that we're looking at, we got recommendations from our architect who has gone through and looked at all the buildings across the district and identified some things that are unsatisfactory need to be, or will soon be unsatisfactory and need to be fixed, as well as other recommendations for improvements. They also had, that list has been gone over by our director, director of facilities as well and recommendations have come up. And I said it before, we're kind of looking at bucketing these into forming categories and we're going to present what, a proposed list to the board in June. Anthony, I want to pick a June date, meeting date that we're going to do, maybe June 5th. So, so that's when we'll say, here's the recommended, proposed, I'm not sure the right word, list of, list of projects to include in this 2019 capital project. Problem is, when you look at how it fits into the budget, it's kind of like, it's kind of like when you buy a car. You know, you, you finance it over 15 years and then as your car, you pay your car off, now that you're not spending that $500 every month, so you could either buy something else or buy another car. So in this case, we need to buy another car in a sense. So the amount of, of money that we pay every year to offset the prior bond we had, you know, it's only going to, would only afford us, and these are round numbers, but only afford us about a $5 million budget. A $5 million list of projects, okay? In 2019. Now in 2023, it's going to be much, much higher than that because a lot more prior work is getting, bonds are getting paid off. Just trying to keep it high level. The problem is, when you look at the list of required stuff across the district, it really only scratches the surface on a lot of required maintenance capital type items. Roof overlays because the roof membrane materials are degrading, door replacements, a lot of, there is a number of compliance, you know, stairwells with the, with the ham rails that are ADA compliant. Like I said, we'll go over the whole list, but that's just basically for maintenance capital. You know, maintenance of this. And what I, what we want to do is really look at some improvements as well, things, you know, improving curriculum. You know, there's, you know, whether it's a science lab or things to help, you know, curriculum and instruction or, or even better things to really make that we need in the district, you know. I'm not going to name any specific projects, but you'll hear them all in, in June. So if you, if you look at, okay, instead of, we only have enough money or ruin the budget to pay for a $5 million list of projects. If we want to, just like a car, if you want to have more projects in your plan, say $10 million plan, then you need to save a little, right? You save, put a little aside every year so that when you go buy the car, you put half down and then you finance the rest. So, so there's a, there's a way to do that. You can't just, you know, every year, we may under run the budget a little bit and that. And Amber, he talks about fund balance. It's basically unspent funds out of your, out of your, out of your budget. And a lot of times, you know, we're allowed to keep like 4% or out, you know, fund balance so that when the budget's developed, you know, we take, I think, a million and a half or 2 million to help offset the budget and things like that. Well, we want to propose that we take some of that under run in the years to put it, put it aside so that we can develop, you know, a 10 million or so capital project. We're not sure about what it's going to be yet. So, so the resolution that we wanted to bring up and we have, we have to, I'm told, we have to include it on the, on the ballot.
Right. The general public will have to vote on it.
To say, yes, it's okay to take some of your unspent budget money in a year and put it aside to help pay for this, this capital project.
So the only thing I want to add is that the resolution does say it has to be over the 4%. So last year, we did have excess fund balance of over 4%. And the resolution is not saying to spend that 4%, it's just to spend anything above that. And we happen to have that right now without really dipping in farther below the 4%. So it would be a good time to have a capital reserve if that's what the public votes on. So it needs to be on the ballot to move forward.
So what I wanted to do, and I don't know if I need to read this now or how you want to go about the resolution.
So we have it in denim. And so I added it to the agenda when I reviewed the agenda. So what we'll do is we can read it. Do you read or I think you have a copy?
I have a copy right here.
Okay. So when we get to it, if you want to read it, you can read it or we could say that it will be uploaded to the board docs so the public could see it for themselves. So I think a lot of people watch, so we can read it as well. We can read it and we can post it to the, the board docs so people could see it as well.
That's basically what it is. And it's okay to take some of our underspending and put it aside into our capital bucket so then we can use it for this next capital project. And again, we'll go over those projects in, in June.
Without the controller dinging us for being over the 4%.
In compliance, right. Exactly. Okay, that's the end of my comments.
All right. Next facility and grounds meeting?
All right, seven already. It is April 5th at 7:30 PM. 7:30 until 10:00. No.
Trying to do that by, right? 7:30 to 10:00.
No.
The goal is an hour and a half.
No?
Sure.
Dutch County School Board Association meeting that I recently attended. The main topic was the, how various school districts evaluate the superintendents, what forms they use. So the forms that we looked at, there's the NISBA superintendent's form, there's the NISCUS form, and a few school districts have their own forms that we use. So people kind of just took a look at them, and it was just a more of a general Q and A between the various people, and just inform people which forms that they use, and did they like it or not. I think most people, they actually felt that they, when they looked at the NISCUS form, they liked that one the best out of the forms, because it had a lot more description of how to fill out the form and categories, and, and, and more, more points to it. So that was basically it. The next, next meeting is April 6th, first Thursday in April. It'll be discussing various schools, we discussed what their budgets look like for the, for next year, as we know them at that point. The other thing we're trying to do is get somebody from down from NISBA to talk about what's the most effective way of lobbying our representatives.
And that's to your, to the School Board Association?
Yeah, the Dutch County School Board, well, NISBA's, trying to get somebody from NISBA to come in. They do a lot of that.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh. So at the last policy committee meeting, we reviewed a ton of policies, you'll see on there. There are some on for the first read tonight, and then there's the remainder on for the second read that were brought up at the last board meeting. One of the ones for the first read that we'll be talking about is the student representative of the Board of Education. So that was something that we've been trying to get into place and so forth. And actually, when we get to that, I have to just amend what it states in the document there, based on information, so I'll explain it when we get there. But the next policy meeting is... Oh, gosh.
I'm sorry, I had to miss the last policy committee.
Can you help me out here?
Policy, we're in March, right?
I want to say April 4th.
Policy is the 3rd, April 3rd at 7:00, and then...
April 3rd at 7:00 PM.
Did you have any other board comments, Georgia?
Yeah.
All right. Meredith?
I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting on February 28th, and we were working on a form that teachers will use to make a request for a new course. And that will be hopefully going out to the staff in general after the revisions are finished in April, in order to sort of create a timeline for teachers to get together, figure out who's going to do curriculum writing together over the summer, PD and all of those things. So that, that is moving forward pretty well. I also attended the Texaco Community Meeting that's around the land development, and I really agree with what Lisa Marie said about there is a lot of development happening and deepening out, and it'll impact our schools, there's no question about it. I encourage anyone who's interested to contact me to get more involved with the Texaco development. There, this parcel of land will be sold to a developer. Now is the time to try to weigh in and create as much control as we can about how this is developed. In terms of the budget, Craig and Kristen have covered it really well, but I just, and now the audience is quite small because it's so late, but this vote could happen as early as tomorrow, and increasing, or decreasing class size and dealing with some of the other issues we face would be so much easier if foundation aid was fully funded. So I encourage you to do your part as a community, and contact your local representative, and tell them also what's important too. I think it's great for the board to hear it, I think it's really important for our elected, our other elected officials to hear it as well. Even speaking to Senator Serena's office today, I felt like I taught her staff a little bit about what it means to support the one bill over the budget. So it, it's not obvious, it wasn't obvious to me. I've been in touch with the Alliance for Quality Education quite a bit, trying to understand the ins and outs, because there's a reason politicians have their reputation that they have. So, so really look deep into that, because that obviously impacts our decision making a ton. I also agreed with, again, and I know this was not met with much popularity, but I do think it's a conflict to have the council meeting on the same night as the board meeting. And right now, you know, it works in the sense that the, our nights are not the nights you can speak at a, at a council meeting, but I think it's something we should talk about, continue to examine, and maybe talk to them about. And, I think that's it, yeah. Oh, and the next Curriculum Committee meeting is March 20th.
Kenny? Thank you.
I just wanted to know if we have a date yet for the safety committee?
No.
No.
We will, we will now, but I needed a facilities component. So, just dealing with the staffing situation, when that gets together, I'll be able to do that.
Is it?
Is it?
All right. So I have a couple. So we are going to have a special board meeting on March 20th, and it will be a gold workshop from 6:30 to 7:30. Also, at the board meeting on March 27th, at 7:00 PM, we're going to have Dr. Gouli and Dr. Wesley from the Dutchess County BOSIs come present the BOSIs budget to us. So that will be here, and that will be at 7 o'clock. That will be a workshop in addition to the other workshop. If I recall from last year's workshop, it wasn't that long, it was just kind of introducing and, and kind of explaining to the board what the BOSIs does, and what their administrative costs are, and all that stuff.
Do we have any input on their budget?
No.
We pay them a lot of money.
We, we get the vote on.
We pay them a lot of money. So any money we pay them, we all get to pay on up, spend on us.
Correct. All right, and the other, I agree, I agree, your board comments, it's my board comments. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, we're trying to be a little bit more transparent. So what we're going to be doing from now forward, whenever there is a contract, or an MOA, or an agreement that is acted upon, and the language is not in the public session, uh, public comment of board docs, because we wait until the board approves it. What will happen is, if, that will be put into the public comment at the following board meeting. So let's take tonight's board meeting, for example. So the board agenda came out on Thursday night, that was the 2nd, March 2nd. So let's say if there was on the February 26th...
No, it was the March session. I know, because that's my birthday.
Oh, what was it?
Two days later, the 4th.
No, no. There was a...
The agenda came out?
The agenda came out on March...
9th.
9th, oh, okay, that's November 13th already, sorry. All right, so it came out on Thursday, March 9th. The previous board meeting was February, Mar, uh, April, February 26th. So if there was a contract in the February 26th board meeting...
27th.
I was pulling it up.
I know, I was...
We were going to say...
One of those meetings.
If there was a contract in the February 27th board meeting that was voted upon, it would be uploaded to the public session on the March 9th, when the agenda was sent out. So if it, instead, let's take Dr. Landau's contract, he was approved on January 26th. So at the next board meeting, February 13th, I believe it was, don't quote me on the exact date, but around that time. At that time, his contract would have went to the public section of board docs in the January 26th board meeting. So you would be able to go back and see what the specific contents of that contract were, without having to foil it.
What part of the public section? Because most things are under...
Public content?
Okay. Is there a public content, sorry, no.
It's a public agenda, so you can go to the executive agenda or public agenda.
But I know, but, but because, I'm sorry, because his, the voting of his contract was on that last...
On the 26th. So that would then be moved, because we didn't approve it until the 26th, right? To January 26th, we approved it. Once we approve it, so for ensuring that we aren't telling the people, it's the next day, we're saying, when the next agenda gets posted, that will then be put onto the public section of the agenda, so that people could see it.
The former agenda.
No, no, the new, the new agenda, oh, you put on the new agenda.
So, but so then is it on the agenda twice?
No, it would be on the January 26th agenda in the public section.
Got it. It would be, it was like, if we're approving something and it's put in executive content for the agenda we're going to be voting on, then it stays in executive content, because it wasn't approved yet. Once it's approved, it moves into the public sphere, and that would be, just so that there's nothing sent down in between, put on the new.
Got it.
It's, I'm sorry, right?
So we're going to be trying that. So, so you could see exactly what the content of the contracts or the MOA agreements are, and so forth.
Are we putting these up on the, on the Beacon School Board website as well?
On board docs.
On board docs.
Just on board docs.
Because one of the issues there is, is, is it becomes difficult to find it later on, because you'd have to actually know the date to go back and look. Whereas if you just had a section in, in, in the, you know, on the Beacon...
Again, this is something that we're trying. This is, we haven't done this in the past. It's always been that you had to foil the information to get it. So what we're trying is, or we'll try it out, and if we have to, we have resolutions here tonight, and I don't know, they wouldn't be in executive session anyway, they would be public section anyway. The next time we have a contract that we vote upon, I, I will walk through, so everybody can see it. All right? Um, that's all I have. All right. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm fading.
We're about ready to get to our consent agenda.
I'm finished with business.
I didn't have any there. Anthony, you wanted to do a motion.
All right. Make a motion that we ask the PTO Collaborative to, they want to run a Meet the Candidates Night, and that we help them advertise the event through our budget mailer, and whatever they feel is, will be helpful in neutral way.
I will check with our attorney to see what we can and can't do. I don't, I'm not going to, I, I had legal advice last time about staying neutral. And we have different attorneys, so I will reach out to them and ask them what I can and can't do. The, the thing that I don't want to do is do something that could jeopardize the vote. We wouldn't want that for people who are going to sign petitions and...
I sent you the NISBA guidance on not jeopardizing the vote.
I'm not saying that, I'm just going to reach out to the attorney and find out.
Okay, so make it the PTO to run it.
Hold on, he made a motion, took, the motion was to ask the PTO to run a Meet the Candidate.
No, but he added on advertising.
I can amend my motion pending legal review, that at least it passes tonight.
I'm, I'm sorry. So your motion is to, to ask the PTO to run a Meet the Candidate Night pending legal review?
And, and to put them in advertising the night in the budget mailer.
I think adding that last, okay, that's, that's his motion. Is there a second to his motion? Sorry. Okay. Comments or questions? So I'm, I'm just going to comment on the last part that you put in, Anthony. I think you have to define what it is to support it. So I think that the motion would be fine, but just taking out that last piece, because then you have to define what is supporting the PTO Collaborative.
I just said, the budget mailer. There's only one mail that goes out.
So, so why don't you just say by doing a budget mailing, instead of saying...
It would be included in the budget.
Well, I guess my concern about the budget mailing is, I'm sure there's a deadline, and we have to get that out to the printers and everything, and what if the PTO hasn't, you know, solidified their dates or anything? I mean, I, I, I don't mind the idea of saying that we'll, you know, if, if, if it's, if our attorneys say we can do something to advertise it, we can, but I, I don't want to get too specific about it, just in case it doesn't, doesn't run.
I think that part of the confusion is stemming from the last year, I think we, I think for clarity, it might make sense to just run it past the new law firm, simply because last year, there seemed to be some confusion around did the, with the PTO individual budgets pay for the copies of the flyers sent home, and then, I, because I was part of that discussion. And then there was a question about whether it was appropriate that the candidate's night is, was advertised via backpack flyers, and... And so it just seemed like, if the attorneys are like, it's fine, then they're, they could just move forward without controversy.
True.
I think we'd need policy.
And I'm not too clear why Lambert would be against it, since Arlington's, since Arlington does it, so...
Yeah. No, I mean, there, there's precedent, I think that was provided last year, but maybe we just...
Why don't we table until Anne Marie is able to talk to council? What's usually just making...
Why don't we just be the lead PTO firm and do it?
Because, well, the issue is, because last year, they were allowed to do it, that, that wasn't the issue last year. The issue last year was...
There were several issues last year.
Well, one of the issues last year was that, even though the PTO was allowed to do it, they weren't, they were very limited in how to advertise it. They were basically doing it with one campaign guy.
Well, I'm in support of the candidates, and I have a problem with that. I'm just saying to move it forward, we need to get the language correct, like, I, I'm really...
And I, and I cited examples of how Arlington does it, and for some reason, for some reason, we got a different interpretation from, from our previous attorney.
Okay, we, we're dealing with the current attorney, so Anne Marie says she would reach out to them. So if we want to move your motion forward...
I'm optimistic that our attorney will find that we can do that.
Okay.
So I heard that there was a motion to table it?
Yeah, motion to table it.
Kristin made a motion to table it, is there a second to table it, Georgia? Comments or questions about tabling it?
So the tabling would be pending attorney feedback, whether or not we can fund or support the advertising of it.
Support the advertising of it.
Yeah.
All those in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I know. Meredith, you were...
Aye.
I know you were, uh, doing... All right.
Now, the other, we were going to talk more about the budgeting piece.
So let's get through the consent agenda first.
Okay. I don't know if I want, you want it here or afterwards. That's it.
Okay. All right. So the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education make more efficient use of its time by adopting this motion to cover those relatively limited matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate that the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything that anybody would like polled from the consent agenda?
12.27.
12.27?
12.10.
12.10? Anything else?
Yeah, 12.11.
12.11?
12.12.
12.12?
12.15. And 12.18.
And I need to poll 12.09. Then why do we keep adding donations to consent agenda?
That's why I like, every time I read it, the purpose of the consent agenda is to speed up the process.
So all those in favor of the consent agenda, 12.02 through 12.27, excluding 12.09, 12.10, 12.27, 12.11, 12.12, 12.15, 12.18. Georgia, is there a second?
A second.
Meredith? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, and I'll say good thanks for 12.07. All right, 12.10?
That's the fiscal management.
I didn't know what to call. Which question?
Yeah, that's the fiscal management goals, and it looks good, except I'm concerned about number five, which says, "The district shall seek and receive all state and federal funds for which it qualifies." I'm a little worried about the strings that come with funding applications and so on, particularly in light of what's happening in Washington, and who's in charge of the Federal Department of Education. Maybe there will be some money coming from Washington, and maybe there won't. But if there is, I'm concerned about the strings that might be attached. I wonder if we might want to consider some kind of addition to that number five, so we don't just sort of policy ourselves into accepting whatever comes down the pike.
What additions were you thinking of, Craig?
Something along the lines of, that we need to review what the conditions are. Although, that's very implicit, but I don't think we should be automatically accepting or applying for anything that's there. So I'm not thinking about it.
I don't think that the district does. I think that, that is more of the, we don't apply for every...
No, I think that comment is, is asking the district to be fiscally responsible, to reach out for state and federal funds that they feel would benefit the district. There are a lot of state and federal funds that we do not apply for, that don't meet with the vision here in the district, or that have strings attached. So I think that that's just a comment to say that we really should look out there for things that would help, because the more state and federal funds we get, the less of the levy could be, and the more programs we could offer.
I'll think about it for the next meeting, maybe I'll have a phrase to add there, but right off the top of my head, I can't think of the word.
Well, Craig, what about, the district shall seek and receive all state and federal funds for which it qualifies, and which it deem to be to benefit the district?
That's not a bad idea. We'll go for that.
It's one of those things you can only say once after that, it goes out.
That it would deem, that it would deem would benefit the district.
Can you put it in writing, Craig, so, and send it to us, so that we can act on it? This is the first read for it. Okay.
Okay, my comments on...
Oh, on 12.10?
Yeah. All right, second sentence, right, first paragraph, second sentence says, "The board seeks to engage in thorough," it should be advanced planning.
Thorough advanced planning, budgets, and to advise expenditures, and it should be, it says advanced, but it should be advanced.
I'm sorry, which one's the same one?
6,000.
Oh, 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 same one.
Advance at a D. Okay.
At a D, okay, line on 7.
How did you get that advanced, at a D to the...
Why don't you have Craig to put it on his, and then he can send it all over? Can you make that advanced in the second line, if you're going to change it?
Me right now for the night?
No, no. When you send your, when you send your updated, I'm sorry?
Send an email for the next meeting, or what?
Right. You were going to send an update on, on the words. If you do it all in one shot, then we can move it forward for a second read.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll do that before the next meeting.
Okay. What was the other one, Mike?
Uh, line on 7, says, "The formal process shall be developed linking fiscal resources and program priorities to the budget," so on. Do we have, do we have that? Do we have a formal process?
A written process? No. Is that, is that what you mean by formal?
Mm-hmm.
A process, it's not a written process.
So should we have a formal written process?
Well, when, when you see that process, do you think that that just means the budget presentations that we have, the way we've been doing it?
The workshops, right. The, the, us meeting, you know, a formal process would be for us to meet, and then to have the workshop presentations for the board, and then have a final budget presentation, and have an adoption, and do all of that. But it's... But it's not written, it's formal.
But it's not the same, right?
No, but no, but you're saying-
But I don't know what you're saying. Proposing it should say written, because formal would imply written opposed to informal.
I think a motion is when it's public business and it's being addressed in the public. It is part of a business of a board meeting. I would take that as formal. I wouldn't just say that written is the only means of being formal, because when we say stuff here and during our board comments, then they're formal comments that we're making to the public, but they're not written statements.
So, proposing that we change it to a written process shall be developed.
If I can ask a question about the process. Also, the, um, just, I mean, it's no longer a fresh reading, I guess, if we're already changing it.
We're pulling it, yes, just bring it back to committee.
And also, I was gonna say that City Beacon's gonna be under state emergency at midnight.
Right.
You knew that before the meeting started.
It's not just the City Beacon, it's Dutchess County.
You knew that before the meeting started, Anthony. You're gonna, that was two minutes prior to it.
Let's just pull it and keep going.
I made my motion.
Do we, I mean, do we keep the meeting going after the state emergency?
I'm going through it.
Yeah, I mean, we really should get through the agenda.
Okay, so this one's being pulled?
12.27.
So, send me your concerns.
12.27, um, basically talks about a student ex officio member. C. We got C, we pulled C.
So, what is your-
What's your question?
Question is, is non-ex officio members or student members?
I thought you were so bent on having ex officio written from the notes that you guys sent me from the policy committee.
But we did say at the policy committee that you agreed to, when you had a lawyer there, that so it would be a student rep and in the-
We can vote on things.
In the resolution, it would say ex officio. So, I don't understand what the question is.
Oh, no, I didn't, I thought I agreed that we would stay with rep and get away from ex officio. It's one or the other.
This is the legal term that we got from the attorney.
That just means that it's a non-voting number, right?
Yes. But it also implies that it's senior, two years in the high school. You know, it triggers a legal, it triggers a legal, um-
Ex officio, is it?
Yeah. Student ex officio is actually in the law.
And then it won't go into ballot, so.
Right.
It's just frustrating, because you had extensive conversation with the attorney at the policy committee. And it was clearly explained that it would be like this on the resolution.
No, it wasn't to me. Because I thought we were going with ex officio when I saw the last policy, George.
You were at the policy committee.
Why didn't say ex officio?
Yeah, but I said that when he was at the last meeting, I said, uh, what the lawyer said at the meeting prior to that, and then he, Anthony was saying something else. I said, "Yeah, but when the lawyer was saying that, why didn't you say something?" And then, he went back to his original thing. So, then I got totally confused and I didn't wanna go back and forth with it and inform-
So, this is the wording that our legal gave us for the resolution for the student representative of the Board.
It's for the vote.
So, it's for the vote. If you're not in agreement with it, it's too late to change it. We can't bring it back. And if it doesn't pass, then we can't put it on for a vote by the public to have it. So, this is the language that our legal gave us.
Let's get stuck on words.
All those in favor of, wait, I need a motion for 12.27.
I have a con, I have a question on that one.
Hold on. Georgia, second?
No.
Can, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, the other question is, we talked about, on Alpha, we talked about electing four members to the Board. How do we know which one will be the one-year, six-week term person?
It's a process. We could send it to you.
So, it's written, how we go about it?
It has to do with how many votes, the highest vote getter of the person who wasn't a sitting Board member. Someone that isn't, someone that was not an incumbent, one of the appointed, the two appointed people. It would, it's determined by the highest vote getter of those two.
So, is it, is it our voting policy?
No, it's law.
It's law.
It's law, don't worry about it.
It's a legal recommendation.
Should it be in our policy? Actually, we have the voting policy.
It's law, it's law. Why does it fit in our policy?
All right, Anthony, my question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, I know. 12.11.
Motion approved, 12.11. First reading of policy 6110, budget plan.
Second.
So, a couple of overall comments on this one. We, I think we should add in here that where we can say that each department needs to develop a, present a plan, kinda like their five-year plan. You know, what's the state of the department, department goals, how they align with the district goals, you know, the benchmarking, the to identify. Well, where would it be?
I think that would be, if you're asking, I think as a Board, we can request-
Yeah, don't forget policies are supposed to be somewhat broad in nature. And, you know, for example, it should be carefully organized and planned. So, you can, once you've got that down, you can, you can procedurally do lots of things.
Well, I've asked every, every single person here that will present it to us if they have a plan. None of them said they did. So, it needs to, I want it to go in here somewhere. And this is where it seemed like where it was.
Goals developed, so how can we give them, like, a way to, you know, develop a plan?
They should have planned.
And plan when we don't even have direction ourselves?
The IT director said, "We, one of our goals is one-to-one on laptops." I said, "Okay, well, when, when is that?" He didn't have any, there was no one else.
But that's something for the superintendent to oversee and then report back to us. So, if they have it, that would be what they would do, the-
It would be in the regulation then, according to the policy. So, you're speaking of specific way to do it. Corresponding regulation would go with this policy.
Oh, exactly. Exactly. The policy has to state that you want, we want the five-year plan.
No, that would be a regulation.
Well, then, how do we get turn?
We can certainly, we can tell the superintendent, "We want this." And then, when they write up the regulation, as long as what they write up is meeting, meeting the policy.
The, I believe that our policy needs to have more direction than what it has regarding each department having, developing a plan and where they need to go, where they're gonna propose to bring the department or how to, how to improve the department. So, what other policy should that go in?
Should be a regulation, not a policy. And so, I can get clear guidance from you from the attorney, because the attorney didn't review these. These came from NISBA. I have the corresponding regulations that I was gonna work on, but I have to wait for the policy. So, if you want-
And she put it in as a regulation.
Right, if you want-
Does it do a five-year plan?
But we should be stating in our policy what we want.
So, you stated your point about it.
Okay, so my other comment is that we need to add a statement that the, um, "The budget shall be reviewed with the Board on a detailed line-by-line basis."
Okay, so that's your recommendations.
It's my recommendation, because we're stumbling over, well, maybe you just think I'm stumbling over, but we're not able to get a good view of what the budget-
You're not, I don't want you to speak for me.
I, I'm not seeing a good view and I can't see how, it's not, it's not showing us where we're going next year on a detailed enough basis. And it needs to be, we need to say in the budget planning where it belongs, that we need to see it on a detailed line-on-a basis. So, okay.
That's some different recommendations.
Any other comments?
I, again, I feel like the policy is, I sort of agree with what Bill's saying, that I agree with what you're saying as well. But in terms of policy, I feel like this states it clear enough. And then, the guidance comes through the culture of the district, through the leadership and-
We have no other way to state what, what we as a Board want, because we can say, "Oh, we'll talk about the regulation, but if it's not in the policy-"
But that's part of it. The regulations are part of it, so we have to-
The regulations come out of the policy to implement it.
But it's drawn from this. So, we're saying that as part of the regulations that we want this, just like with the whole Wellness Committee. There's a set of regulations that go along with that policy on what we need to do, that they are working hard on.
But we don't have a say in the regulations.
But we can tell them what we want in the regulations.
That's what we're trying to tell them.
Yeah, but not in the policy. It's gotta come with that.
Also, I think what we are stumbling over, and I struggle with similar things to you in that the default becomes the policy and therefore, what we default to is the policy that's been written down, because that's the only continuity that's really existed for a long time. And so, that always feels too broad and somewhat lacking. What we're, what you're seeking is governance. And we empower the superintendent to provide governance. We've had an interim superintendent, so they are just holding things together. And then, we've hired somebody to come on and help us sort of create some sort of plan with our goals and provide, we provide them direction, how it gets executed. And the hope is that, and you don't wanna tie somebody in too much with a policy. The policy, while it can provide specific direction, also can provide constraints. So, for example, Cecilia showed me that the policy, the Board policy is that it's 29 students in a class. While that's not ideal and probably not what we would want, you also don't wanna hem yourselves in with a specific number. You want to say, "This is, this is the limit we would go to, but we never go near that. What we do is we stay at 23." That comes from regulation execution. And then, the other thing you're talking about as far as how things rise to the top is that department heads need to be empowered to take some ownership and be held accountable for their departments and where they go. And that also comes from leadership. And if, I think what we're seeing is that, you know, the main directive for a long time is, has been to just not go over budget. So, there's been a lot probably built into the budget that, to just as safeguards. And, you know, like the, the carryover line item for the previous year, where it's like, "Well, maybe our fuel costs are lower, but we're just gonna carry over the same money, because we, God forbid, we, you know, go over budget." Like, that's, that's a priority just to not have the, you know, go off the cliff. But it's not a long-term leadership priority. The superintendent will bring a long-term leadership priority. I, I think that, I, I understand your frustrations. I think that's just how these things get executed, whether it's policy, regulation, leadership, and then our goals and how they fit together.
So, I'm open to amending it. So, I think that we need to be, state more clearly that we, that we require a, a, um, a plan, a written plan for each of the department heads to present to us. Okay. So, all those in favor of the policy as is? Or you could vote it down and then it would be done. So, all those in favor of policy at 12.11?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meredith? Two opposed, I heard clearly, Anthony and Mike. So, that means that there were seven ayes?
I don't know.
I voted aye.
There's only one way to do it.
I heard two noes.
Just raise your hands if you said aye.
Raise your hand if you said aye. Okay. Craig, you didn't vote?
I abstained. Don't grasp it, I'm sorry.
So, six to two with Craig abstaining. Okay. 12.15. Is that one mine as well? Any motion for 12.15? Do we skip one?
To approve 12.15. He's doing it in the order of the policy.
Okay.
So, Georgia, Meredith is the second. Comments or questions?
Um, a question on the, the last paragraph on the first page. It says superintendent or designated is hereby directed to respond to all audit findings or recommendations. And what I wanted to, what I think we should add in there is a quarterly report out on where we stand with the, with the corrective actions.
Again, that's a regulation.
Well, I think that we're, we, the Board is putting in policy what, what we require.
Oh, it's not like we wrote this full policy. These are things that are, that are coming from NISBA.
Right, but we, I believe we should have a, a written policy standard quarterly update on where we stand with the audit findings and our corrective actions, so we make sure that they don't happen again.
Okay. Any other comments?
Again, I feel like that's regular, that's procedure, regulatory, you know, but I-
But the regulation, who's sitting with Ann Marie writing the regulation saying, "Oh, we wanna put this quarterly reporting in there"? Nobody is.
It does say right now that a statement on the status of corrective actions taken is, is part of the paragraph. So, is that, is that enough?
I just wanna report it quarterly.
I think that's a little bit too-
Otherwise, we don't, I haven't heard, I, well, because I haven't heard, I haven't heard an update. So, if we have it in here, it gets in the regulation, then it comes to us quarterly.
So, you stated what you wanted. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eight to one. Unless, Craig, did you have a stand again?
No.
All right. 12.12.
That's the budget transfers. It's a motion to approve, I have 12.12, policy 6150.
Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia, comments or questions?
So, in this one, it says, "All transfers in excess of $5,000 require prior Board of Education approval." I guess, first thing, what I wanted to verify that that's the correct statement, because I haven't, we haven't had that ever before.
This policy's, it hasn't been in fact.
Right. Well, you have, you do get the budget transfers. You don't, you get them after the fact.
We get it posted. So, this one says, I wanna point out, this one is prior. So, anything that you do on the transfer list that says, um, $5,000 or above, before they transfer it, we're gonna have to approve it. So, I also wanted to state, I wanted to add in here that they would state the explanation of why the transfer needs to be made, why it wasn't accounted for in the original budget. Let me see. The reason, uh, hold on a second. The impact, the impact on the budget item that you're taking the money from in order to transfer it.
So, what do you, is that, Mike?
So, I wanna add to this to include when they, when it is coming to us for approval, that we get included an explanation of what the transfer is, why it's needed. What's that?
From the last line, kinda summed it up.
No, well, there's a discrepancy, I haven't gotten to that. There's a discrepancy with the last two sentences. But, um-
I mean, I would point out, without this policy, that the superintendent is already allowed to not exceed 1,000, but a thousand by the transfer, based on the vote that we had back on our first meeting in July, 6.05. So, that motion, that, that item passed and that authorizes superintendent to transfers not to exceed 1,000.
Without prior approval?
Yep.
Okay, well-
We can combine that. So, we're just, we're just making it 5,000 to 1,000.
But I haven't seen that. We haven't seen, to my knowledge, a list of transfers by 1,000 and higher prior approvals. It's always been, "Here's what we moved, here's what we transferred."
I don't know.
My comment on this policy is that I wanted to add in there that when it is being presented to us for approval, it includes certain information.
You want a rationale?
Why it's being transferred, why it was missed in the original budget, and what the impact is on the, on the account that it's coming from.
So, I don't, so missed might be inappropriate word.
Well, why wasn't, why wasn't included in the original budget?
So, a budget is, and you're doing a budget a year in advance, so there's unforeseen reasons why you may need to take something from another reason. I don't want an explanation, but a missed thing may more like unforeseen. So, if there's repairs-
I'll change my words. Why, why wasn't included in the original budget?
Do you think it's necessary to actually state that? I mean, I mean, if we're gonna authorize it, I think it's just the superintendent or assistant superintendent will learn, if they don't know already, that, that there's certain expectations. In order for us to approve it, we want certain information.
Right.
All right, so you said the wording change that you wanted.
That was one, and then the last one is, it looks like there's a discrepancy between the last two sentences. One says, "All transfers in excess of 5,000 require prior Board of Education approval." and then it says, superintendent will report any transfers to the board as an informational item at its next meeting. So.
And realize too, because if you have something that needs to be paid, and you don't have a board meeting, and you need prior approval, and you have to pay something, you're sitting on it.
That was my question, what is it going to do to, to your operations?
Right, it'll, it'll halt our operations.
If anything over $5,000 requires our approval, and, you know, that could be two weeks, three weeks, you know, is that?
So if we pull it, I can do a little more research on that, we'll see.
But aren't you saying right now that the, anything in excess of $1,000 requires prior approval?
Yes.
So how, it hasn't, doesn't seem to have impacted any operations?
Because it hasn't followed, because it hasn't followed.
Because it was after the fact, you got the reports after the fact.
Right, and that's just been a result of present confusion with two departments?
No, it's been, it's always been that way, always, since I've been here.
So I.
The key is, we, if we want to force Emery to, to, to send things to us ahead of time, the question is, what does that do to the operation of the department?
Well, I guess that my question right now is more, what about, like, what does this do to a policy thing? Why even vote on a policy if we don't follow it? I, I'm not even, it has nothing to do with this, it's just like a bizarre.
Zoom, you just need to update these.
Right, I can already say, I'm like, this wasn't done, what we were trying to do was get through them, and the process in which we were utilizing wasn't really sufficient. So this is a very good push towards getting through them, so I think, because that was one of the concerns, the things that were there that just weren't followed.
Okay. Cool, okay.
That's why these were.
So that, and then that's why it was decreased to 5,000, because then that would be a much bigger number, it's unrealistic to expect $1,000 to be, okay.
So we had to add in a dollar amount, so we got the last meeting.
Got it.
Let's just.
I need a, for twelve, we pulled twelve twelve. Twelve point one eight, any motion?
Motion to approve twelve point one eight, second, any homeschool policy, executive third.
Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia. I, I had pulled it, but I, I have no more comment on it.
I, I, actually, I can, I follow a bunch of homeschooling pages, and I know that you had sent us the article about new boards, having, having their official policy not including kids in extracurriculars, and the, there were some complaints, but, but the net was that a lot of people were saying it's, it doesn't affect them as much because they plan a lot of their kind of extracurriculars during the day with one another in terms of, like, they go to symphonies together, they, you know, have sports teams that they develop, or kind of intramural, so that's just my addition to that, that it's not, it doesn't necessarily ding my community that hard.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Twelve point oh nine. Twelve point oh nine is the first read on the student representative of the Board of Education.
I didn't have to pull it. We did pull it. No, I think we have to pull it from the agenda for first reading.
Wait, but then, but then it isn't, it's, no, no, that's the vote.
That's not the vote, this is just.
I pulled it.
We, we wrote up, like, a, a general policy.
And we did vote on it.
Yeah.
We're voting on it right now.
I think we have to pull it from the agenda completely. Table it, sorry.
Well, we could do it with amended, that's what I was going to say, is make a motion, I was going to pull it to a first second, then do it with amended, amendment, to it. So I need the motion to approve twelve point oh nine.
Motion to approve twelve point oh nine.
Second?
Table that we, a motion that we tabled twelve point oh nine.
Well, I didn't answer that yet, comments or questions?
A motion that we tabled twelve point oh nine.
But that risks it not being on the ballot.
No, no.
No, the resolution was on the ballot.
So we felt like we needed.
That's okay.
But you, so you've got an issue with the wording?
Yeah, I need a second so I can talk about my issue.
Second.
Okay, so we approved the resolution that we would have a student ex officio member, I just emailed the board what the qualifications are for student ex officio member, and if the vote has passed, we have to follow the law, and the education law, what an ex officio member is supposed to be, this violates that policy, that law, in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer.
So our lawyers did review the policy, and they reviewed the language of the resolution?
Yes.
And the recommendation was to approve policy twenty-two forty-five, which is twelve point oh nine, minus bullet number five, which is every two years, the issue of appointment will be put to the community for reapproval, because they read two, they said it may be, but they didn't say that it had to be. Past advice said that it had to be, voted on every two years, and what they were saying is that they looked at the union free school districts and the small city school districts, and the way that it pertains is it may be voted on every two years, that it's going to have to be, so.
No, I get that part, I, I, like I said, I, I sent section ten of, I'm sorry, number ten, paragraph ten of that section to everyone, it says that, it says may. My issue is that this policy does not follow the qualifications of what is an ex officio member according to section two five zero two of the educational law.
In your opinion, and what, what, what I'm telling you is that our legal looked at the policy.
Yeah.
And they looked at the wording for the resolution, and they said it was okay.
But so you're saying, because it does say for D, the ex officio student member should be a senior at the high school and shall have attended such high school for at least two years prior to selection.
See, but see, we have regulations, and the last sentence is that the regulations are going to be written by superintendent.
And the regulations don't have to comply with the law?
Well, they do.
It's not that they don't have to comply with the law, but we don't have to, it's, again, our policy, regulations. So that's going to be in the regulations based on what the student needs to be.
The policy, I don't think, applies to the ex officio member, we call it student representative for a reason, so we wouldn't call it ex officio member. So we can broaden it, that was the conversation policy, we can broaden the participation of the student representative.
Let's pull it, I'm, I heard you arguing it just.
Me too, just pull it.
Coined, I pulled.
I've had it. So when we have our next policy committee meeting, speak up, but don't like, keep, like, doing all this like computer stuff, because I think you're confusing yourself, I'm just saying that.
Sure, no problem.
I mean, we understand, we had several conversations about.
I understand what you're saying, but we've talked about this so many times, and I've understood so many sample policies.
Yes, and I don't know why I understood something you didn't understand, and you wanted to say something I didn't understand, I have no idea, it wasn't the same rule.
Well, I think there's three people that are understanding it one way, and you're understanding it a different way, and you're not.
That's why I reiterated the last time, the attorney said, so that this way, there could be some correlation between what is, what is the final product versus all of the back and forth, I think we're getting lost in the back and forth, and that's why we don't know what the end result is, so that's what I said at the last meeting, so if there was clarity needed at that point, I suggested that we speak to the lawyer, and so this way, we wouldn't be here right now, but we are, again, right here, again, so we'll go back to the lawyer, which I think is best, and you get clarification.
Thank you.
All right, we need, is this roll call, Kelly?
Twelve point oh two.
Uh.
Where are they?
Thirteen point oh one. Any motion to approve thirteen point oh one?
Motion to approve thirteen point oh one.
Meredith?
Thirteen point oh one.
I need a second?
No.
Comments or questions?
Simple questions, so the amount of money you have here, it looks like it's option two?
It's, it's a combination of one and two, so we're using some money in the budget, we have $30,000 in there, so we're going to attempt to purchase all of the things on the first, but it was too expensive, so I told Ron, he couldn't do the budget, so it's a compromise.
My other comment, I would love a five-year plan, this bus plan, just so it's not like what's it going to be, what's it going to be.
And you know why, he would actually have that for you, I'd be more than happy to ask him, I'm sure he has that.
That would be great.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Oh.
Ms. Lynn?
Aye.
Ms. Patchen?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Zog?
Yes.
Ms. Gaston?
Yes. I need a motion for thirteen point oh two.
Motion for thirteen oh point two, thirteen point oh two, adoption resolution for the inclusion of proposition and resolution, annual budget, and.
Second?
Second.
Meredith?
Ms. Lynn?
Hold on one second, comments and questions? Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Ms. Huer?
Yes.
Ms. Patchen?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Zog?
Yes.
Ms. Gaston?
Yes.
Yes. I need a motion for fourteen, addendum item fourteen point oh one, resolution zero three one three one seven A, it says, resolve that the board authorizes the interim superintendent to execute the amendment to retainer services agreement with Thomas, Jongh, Waxman, Puttergut, and Malay, LLP, for the sixteen seventeen school year in accordance with the terms and conditions of the amendment.
So moved.
Second. Kristen, that was Anthony's second. Comments and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine oh. I need a motion for addendum item fourteen point oh two, resolution zero three one three one seven B. Mike, you want to read it?